The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
Special board meeting to order. And sorry, my computer is... I believe the first item on our agenda is the Southwest Artificial Turf.
Would you like me to make the motion and then discuss? I move that the Southwest High School Synthetic Turf Funding Plan as presented be approved. Second?
This is Brian Matz, who's the Associate Principal AD. Mark Champkin, in charge of the Southwest Booster Club. Mike Homer from Redler. On the background now, this is back all the way back to June 2013. We've been working with the Southwest Booster Club. Looking at the possibility of putting this turf field at Southwest High School. We have worked with Redler Corporation, which has done a lot of the synthetic football fields in the area. And again, have all of us been working together trying to make this move forward. The estimated cost of the project is $932,000. And again, a lot of the advantages of a synthetic field, again, it can be used for other sports other than football, it can be used 24/7. You know, it can be used whether it's raining outside, whether it's sleeting outside. It again allows for an extended playing season. But the item of the discussion is really the funding of the field. And I've talked to three other school districts who have put in fields, West Apier, Kimberly, and Ashwabanon. And again, how did they help the Booster Clubs be able to fund the field and provide the startup costs? Because when you're fundraising, you're not going to be able to raise, you know, the entire amount of the dollars all at one time. After talking to the other districts, what the majority of all three districts have done is that they have funded the cost of the field upfront and then are paid back as the Booster Club receives donations. Right now, the Southwest Booster Club has roughly $450,000 in cash and donations that will be coming, I guess, in the future. And, you know, based on what I've, you know, discussed with the business people at the other three school districts, the recommendation I would have is to, again, we would fund the expenditures over the period and hope to be... When is the end of the project?
They expect it to be done.
August.
August.
In August. So, we would be looking again then to use the Fund 21. Fund 21 is a fund that the DPI sets up. It's used for the gifts that come in and being spent out. So, we would be looking at spending the dollars out of Fund 21 and then having it be reimbursed as the donations come in. And again, some of those donations may be over a three-year period. So, it will not be, you know, a short term that all of the monies will be back to the district. And then that would be my recommendation is to use the Fund 21 like the other districts have done. It keeps a separate account of just that project. And again, the product, we would be expending the dollars and then offsetting the dollars that we've spent by the donations that Southwest Booster Club returns to us. Any other comments anyone wants to?
First question.
First of all, congratulations to the Booster Club. I think this is a great project. I think that field has needed some work since my sons attended Southwest, and that was many years ago. But I do have a financial concern, or maybe it's not a concern. What assurances do we have if the Booster Club falls $100,000 short, $200,000 short? Do we have a financial liability?
I mean, at this point in time, the other districts, again, did not have any type of contract with the Booster Club. I don't know that you could have a contract with the Booster Club. But yes, we are dependent on those dollars being raised by the Booster Club.
The other thing I think though that we need to remember is, I don't expect that to happen because I think we have the verbal commitments that we're looking for. But there is cost savings to the district for a synthetic field. So, what really what I look at this as is we're getting a gift from the Booster Club that's going to pay for the entire synthetic field. And then on top of that, we will, as a district, be saving dollars for the maintenance, the upkeep, the facilities of that field that we're normally putting into the field that we would no longer need to put in. So, if that were to happen where we might be short in the three-year that we're looking for, we still are going to be able to offset some of that cost by what we're saving by not having to put the things into the field. Does that make sense?
So, how much?
How much is the cost savings?
Right.
Cost savings typically associated with this type of a project is a percentage. Obviously, a winter like we've had this year, the maintenance of that field gets much greater than a typical winter just due to excessive wear and tear. So, each year, there's potentially $20,000 to $30,000 in repairs to that field that we have, as the Booster Club, have funded in the past. Just because the grass gets wore out, we have to resod it and rewater and do those kinds of things. So, it's more of a percentage of savings of maintenance costs, which is typically what we see from the other schools is around 75%. What the total, excuse me, the total cost of the maintenance is per year on that school, on that field, I think Alan has that information.
How confident are you that you're going to reach the 920?
Sir, I've been confident for three years that this project will get done. The problem that I had at this point is we're not the only school that's requesting financial resources for this type of project. And with each business and with each financial donor, either alumni or parents, I'm sometimes the second and third person that's asking for money for this type of field. So, the time is of essence for me to get those funds generated. Majority of those that are donating are wishing to sponsor either the scoreboard or the concession area. They're trying to spread that payment over a two- or three-year period of time because they're involved with East Apier and they're involved with other school projects where they're, they don't have the money right now, but they want to help everybody. The longer that we go without having all the money to start the project, the further on I get on their list, and now instead of being the second or third, I'm the fifth or sixth person. So, I'm extremely confident we'll get the money, it's just time.
Kim did mention the verbal assurances from the Booster Club. We had discussed some sort of written document where the Booster Club would put in writing that they agree that until the bonds are paid in full, any monies raised by the Booster Club will go towards the expenditures on this project. And I think we're still in the process of pursuing that and we will have that done so that we memorialize those written assurances.
The Booster Club sponsors and supports all athletics, all teams and all athletes. So, we have a financial responsibility to all of our coaches and all of our students. We have created a separate fund called the Stadium Enhancement Project Fund where money that wants to be specifically designated to this project goes into that special account. I can't take 100% of the money that's raised by the Booster Club throughout the year and put it to this project because we have other athletes and other coaches that need support as well.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Does the fact that it's going synthetic make it eligible to host WIAA? So, they will only have their tournaments on synthetic fields?
Well, what is happening, I was just having this conversation the other day with somebody, from a football playoff standpoint, for example, the WIAA over the last three or four years has only had what their Level 4 playoff games, which are a neutral site game that you could, that you could host, bring lots of fans to the community, spend lots of dollars in the community. The Booster Club can generate a lot of money for those. They are only being played on synthetic turf fields. Another issue is that because there are a good number of synthetic turf fields in the state now, if your field is not in great condition, you can lose having that game at your site because of that. And you would either have to go to a school, if you happen to be playing a school that has a turf field, you're going to go there and play on their own field, or to a neutral site where now you lose that money that you were going to be able to generate hosting that game and of course, the advantage for your fans and your kids to play at home. Now you have to go play somewhere else. We have made sure that this field is set up with appropriate lines, obviously, for football, but for soccer as well to make it an eligible...
So, it will be regulation size for soccer as well?
Absolutely. It will be not only for the spring, but in the fall, the WI has a requirement that if you play soccer on your football stadium field, you cannot host a home soccer playoff game. But if it is a synthetic turf field, then you can. Again, it's all about field conditions and those types of things.
And what are the maintenance, how do you maintain a synthetic field?
Well, it's actually very simple. There is a field groomer, if you will, that comes as part of the project. And what you do is you simply, depending on the amount of field is used, pull it behind a tractor or a gator, if you will, and it redistributes the rubber that is down in the field to make sure that it stays level and consistent and it kind of brushes the, kind of like after you vacuum your carpet, it looks nice and standing up and nice and fresh. So, that's, that is the maintenance of the field. Nothing else.
Then, safety. Is a synthetic field safer than a standard field?
It's much safer due to the consistency of the surface, being a level surface, a smoother surface, not to mention the fact that a rubberized material in the field turf itself, from concussion standpoint, it's a softer field than what you would have on natural grass. Safety is a huge benefit, not to mention the playability and the usability and having it more available, but especially with our youth football program that's now started in the district. It's a much safer, not only because it's consistent, but also softer when it comes to concussions and those injuries.
And then do we need any special cleats to play on that kind of field? You can use regular?
Same shoes that you would use playing on the grass.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
And when you say it can be used 24/7, I'm assuming that means it's been pouring rain for three days, you could still host three different football games on the field and have it have no impact on...
The drainage systems that are underneath these fields are fantastic and in theory it could be pouring out rain all day long and you're playing on a field like it's dry.
And then, no, go ahead. Will there be opportunity for the other high schools in our district to be able to practice on that field so that they're not continually behind, you know, having a, you know, negative home field advantage because they don't play on that kind of a field as often? Will there be opportunity for them to practice on that field? Have you, I don't know if you even talked about that, but...
We haven't really talked about that because I think the, every high school's field itself is high use. So, trying to find time for their own teams to get on a field is difficult depending upon what season you're in. I think there's definitely potential. We already do sharing of facilities, you know, there was a couple of years ago where Preble was supposed to host a baseball tournament and we couldn't get on the field, so they came over to Southwest. So, whenever we run into those situations, we're also willing to work together and share. I think it would just making sure, be making sure that the priority is getting Southwest teams practicing and then if there's, if it's open, that's the great thing. It's there, it's ready, it's, you know, wear and tear, you don't have to worry about how many teams are on there. And as you can see by the news coverage so far, I mean, those schools that have synthetic fields, they've been practicing for weeks and we're still in the gym. So, I think there's a good way to set up rotation and to get teams in and there's a game for Southwest, then maybe another school could use that field for practice.
Apparently this afternoon, we have JV and a varsity and a freshman girls soccer team practicing. We have JV and varsity lacrosse teams practicing. So, when you look at the available hours, if you gave each team two hours of practice time from the day, from the minute the school got out until 10 o'clock at night, most of those hours would be used with our own school teams. But definitely the ability to use that field when East West or Preble's field would be unusable is something that would be done as long as time allotted.
One of the other things, I'm sorry Kim, when we talk about maintenance savings is, it's not only the maintenance on this field, but if we have a rainy week in the fall, instead of tearing up our practice fields, which then will require all that more maintenance to repair them, we can practice on this field and not be, you know, tearing up that grass. This time of the year now, before the grass gets growing again, you're out there tearing up the dormant grass, you could be out on this field instead until that grass gets a chance to grow and the ground really gets soft and that type of thing. So, it's a, it's a maintenance on practice field as well as on the maintenance.
I think the other piece too, just speaking of the other schools, is I think this is a great opportunity for us to try a synthetic field and really look at cost savings and all of those things that you're talking about because we do have two other high schools that are interested in exploring this as well. So, it's a great opportunity for a group that's already very well organized, have things in place for us to really look at and dig in and make sure this is exactly what we want to do on those other fields as well.
So, let's go back to the money. Just in terms of, so someone had mentioned $20,000 to $30,000 a year for the upgrade of maintenance of a natural grass field. And that's including a tough winter like we've had with, and the snowfall was slightly above average, but it was very cold. So, tell me about the renovation costs for a synthetic field and what the lifetime is.
The lifetime typically for a synthetic service, in this case, the field itself is about a 10-year, eight to 10 to 12-year lifespan. The advantage, if you will, that we have in the north is that for three or four months out of the year, that field isn't going to be used because it will be covered with snow. So, that life of a field is typically, if we were in Arizona or Florida where it's being used for the entire year is where that lifespan is being based on. Because of our area, the turf manufacturers have provided us with a 10-year warranty, which typically they provide an eight-year warranty, but because of our situation, they have warranted that field for 10 years, understanding that three or four months out of each season, the field would not be used.
So, if it's a 10-year lifespan in this climate, and then 10-year lifespan means complete replacement after 10 years, like a roof or repair?
The carpet itself typically would be 10 years. We couldn't possibly get 12 years, 13 years, but at some point, the turf would need to be replaced. But when you look at the bids and the overall cost of the project, the carpet itself is about half of the overall cost. It's the underground work, it's the drainage that we mentioned, it's the excavation work, it's the permitting, it's the, all the stuff that we don't really get to see, that's where...
So, what's it set up for it?
It would be just replacing it currently, rolling it off and rolling new carpet.
About half a million dollars every 10 years, is that accurate?
That would be a little bit less.
The turf bids were low, were in the low $400s.
Well, but until you get to the point where like you would need new decking on your roof, right?
Right, right, right.
So, then, so in just in terms of the annual upkeep, what's the cost of that?
Of a turf field?
Yep, of a, yeah.
The synthetic field?
Yeah.
Literally, it's simply the, the cost of the field groomer that comes, is part of the project. I mean, we're paying for it, but they leave it there. And it would be the hour, only simply the hours that it takes the person to drive.
Oh, I see, to go do that, okay.
That is, that is it. Every, there is no water, fertilizer, mowing, lining, it's, the field is, there it is.
Whichever year, we're having to do the lining, the mowing.
Right, right. So, there is none of that, none of that work required.
And I understand the smoothness of the field is, I mean, it's really important. Divids make injuries. Now, let's talk a little bit about the use. Lori, could you scroll down or go back to the top, I should say? Go right there, okay. So, it says here, right, two things. Field will allow for an extended playing season. And then the other thing is other high schools could use a field if their field is unplayable. So, let's do the second thing first. So, how does, how is that really going to work? The Southwest Booster Club has raised this money, made commitments, made commitments out of their future earnings in order to pay for this. How does it really work for other high schools to use this field if their field is unplayable?
Well, we just, kind of like we just said, so if, if they had a soccer game away and they have, and we know football is usually played two nights of the week, JV and varsity, those other schools could use this field if theirs is unplayable because there's no one on it. I think the other piece is if West Football wanted to host a WIAA event after the season, so we're in tournaments, they could host that on this field even though it's West who is the one who's actually doing all the work and sponsoring that. I mean, I think it all can be flexible, but the key is that Southwest would have to have priority of the field. But that doesn't mean that just because it's their field, we wouldn't be open, as I talked about the baseball. When Preble's field wasn't playable for baseball, we moved the whole entire tournament over to Southwest. Preble ran the whole tournament, but we used Southwest's field. So, we already do that in the district. We already help each other out. We had a gentleman show up once in field space just the other day and he wanted it at a certain place and it wasn't available, so we start digging, well, where else could they go? What other field is open? Who doesn't have practice? Whose field is playable? So, we're already doing all of that within district even though we compete against each other. I feel like we already, we really do support each other in those efforts and the 80s were...
I can use that to give you another example, not within the district, but tomorrow night, we were, we were supposed to play a host, West Apier, in girls JV and varsity soccer. Well, our field isn't ready, so I contacted their athletic director, they have a turf field. Would you be willing to just let us come and play there? And I've got the officials, I'll just call them and tell them to drive to West Apier instead of here. And so, instead of us canceling the game, we're going to, the girls will be able to play tomorrow at West Apier. This Saturday, the varsity girls, instead of having a game canceled in Oshkosh, the athletic director at Oshkosh North was able to get tight a game at UW Oshkosh for a two-hour block, so we could, we played them there on that field. So, we, we do that even with other districts, kind of a thing. And the districts that have fields like this get those calls late in the season, in the fall, and early in season in the spring saying, hey, we're not ready yet, how about if we come to your place? And that saves, you know, West Apier doesn't have to have a bus now tomorrow night to come, not that that's a huge expense, but, you know, again, you can host more games, Booster Club can sell more hot dogs, we get the ticket revenue because we're hosting more of those things and we're not spending money on busing to play at home.
And the other thing is it can also be a way to bring in dollars because we have, we have often requests to use our fields for either city leagues or adult leagues and we are always saying, no, no, we can't, we can't handle the wear and tear, tear up the fields where now you would be able to rent a facility to use the field, which brings an income to offset the cost. We can't, we really cannot afford anything on our fields right now but our own use, so...
So, I'm going to skip over my question about the extended playing season and ask one final question about heat. So, I'm just not sure how like a rubberized, like a playground rubberized surface astroturf is. And there are numerous reports of, of, you know, heat being an issue with a rubberized surface. So, could you please explain how astroturf is or is not like a rubberized surface? And then what is the, the heat sort of maximum threshold before burns occur, if they occur at all?
Got the expert in the room.
Unlike Elmerick with Redler Corporation, heat in the northern climates has not typically been an issue with synthetic turf fields just due to our maxes here. Typically, the field may be five degrees hotter when you step on on a playing surface. Whereas when you get to the southern climates, they're, they have the heat issues. They're the irrigate, their synthetic turf. In the northern climates, it's not necessary to get within that playable range of heat.
And so, you're saying that the synthetic turf surface will be five degrees hotter than the ambient temperature?
On average.
On average?
On a warm day.
The other thing is in the summer is when our field is used much less.
Except for football in August.
Well, in August, right, right. But now the, I think, again, the WIA has coming out with a lot of standards that are going to come into effect this fall in regard to heat and changing of the amount of time you can practice and there's lots of things coming out with that. A lot of the things that we're kind of seeing trickle down like from the NFL with their limited practice times, contact times with kids, time off needed based on, all based on weather.
So, okay, this may seem like an obtuse question, but is this field in full sun?
Sure.
Yes.
No.
I mean, because we can get some hot days here in August. I mean, it could be, even though it's Wisconsin, it can be 100.
I would say that any of those days when the, when the actual ambient temperature is that warm, we would not be practicing anyways. So, it would not be an issue.
All right. That's all for me.
Another question. And going back to the cost and cost savings, as we talk about these different, knowing that in 10 years, we need another capital outlay of a million, is there discussion?
Half a million.
Half a million.
Or half a million.
And then sometime in the future, we, you would need to do that under layment again.
Right, at some point. Has there been discussion as, as we talk about cost savings, recognizing that for 10 years, that that would be a fair amount of money each year set aside? Are we thinking down that road ahead already as, as we plan?
Yes, ma'am. We have great opportunities for our local businesses to have their logo on the field and in the flyers and the information that we've distributed to them is a 10-year contract for their logo to be in one of fourth places on the field. That revenue is roughly $400,000. The contract is a 10-year contract, so in 10 years or 11 or 12 years, whenever we needed to roll the carpet and roll it new, we would then solicit new sponsors for those logos and that money would go towards the funding of the carpet.
So, that, so right now, the capital campaign though is for the existing, what we're hoping to have in place by August. And there's not a plan or set aside? I mean, if, because this is a manageable amount, especially if you're, you're utilizing this space to outside, you know, I mean, to, to have that revenue continuously. Now, we're saying we're saving 30, 20, 30,000 a year, but in reality, you're going to have to, there's a front line capital investment every 10 years. So, that, I just want to not lose sight of the planning because the sustainability of a field like this is very important. I don't know if our neighbors have had those plans, but I would certainly hate to, to be 10 years down the road and then say, oh, no, I need another, you know, I want, I want it for, for children in 10 years and 20 years and to be able to have the same positive experiences they might have beginning in August, so...
The, the other districts that are putting in fields have had those, we've had those same conversations with them as to what are you thinking? And it would be that, you know, the length of the field is what you get your advertising for and then we come on back again from that type of thing.
When we start talking 10 years down the road, that raises another question in my mind. Obviously, this Booster Club and this administration is gung ho about this project. In 10 years, we may have a different administration and we may have, and as kids graduate, membership in Booster Clubs change. I mean, I think my concern would be that in six or eight or 10 years, we may not have a Booster Club that's as excited and energetic about this project as you folks are. So, I guess that, I don't know if that's a concern, but I think that's something to keep in mind that, that's another thing looking down the road, what is the Booster Club and the administration and their involvement in a project like this going to look like?
It almost seems like an endowment fund might be a better way to call.
Yes, I had entertained the idea of creating a stadium enhancement, stadium financial committee that would include parents of fifth, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, kids in the elementary level that are, that are interested in, and have them kind of work on that next 10 years. At the same point, looking at potential rental income and creating some type of an account, even though it's money coming into the district, it was money generated from the synthetic surf... surface and to use that money in a kitty. But again, it's, it's not my money, it's the school district's money.
Right.
It's their property, so that would be, but those would be opportunities and potential ways of building that needed money, knowing that it's going to be 10 years down the road.
For sure. I would say that in, in the, the districts that have had these fields for a while, that there's pretty close to zero chance that they would ever not be able to redo this again. In fact, they're thinking about how can they add another field somewhere in the district type of a thing. And any, any, certainly athletic administrator that has the, the good fortune to, to be overseeing one of these fields would, would never want to go back to grass and, and not let that happen. This is, you know, we will be, we will be surrounded by these fields in the Green Bay area within a very short period of time and it will, it will be the norm, it really will.
That point is well taken and all of the districts that you have spoken about this evening all have one high school. And we have four that we need to be mindful of. And I appreciate your efforts and I think your point is well taken, Kim, that, you know, we can test the waters with this surface and, but we do need to
Sure.
Think about our other two high schools.
But we know East probably for the most part. But we can't touch that. Wouldn't look at synthetic just because of the tradition and the history possibly. I know Tim has, you know, really said he thinks he needs to maintain what he has. So I think definitely though, the other two
Right.
And they are interested, so. I think the other piece that we have advantage of is Brian has been through this process before in a previous district that he was in, so his expertise and the ability to help us pull some of this together, having gone through the experience already is also helpful and will help us be able to navigate some of these other pieces with some mentorship, so. Anything else?
Just a, just a, do you reline it for every event?
Currently, we do, yes, ma'am.
But I mean, with the, the synthetic, do you reline it?
No, in the, it might be difficult to see in, in the picture that we provided, but all three of the sports that would be using that field are lined. So obviously, the football is the most visible, but
Obviously.
Soccer line and lacrosse line, so those lines are part of the field, but it's not, it's not painted. Those lines are actually different colored carpeting fibers.
Okay.
So it's a permanent line and
Okay.
Very consistent and obviously very durable.
It's sewn, it is literally sewn into the, to the carpet. So when they, when they unroll that, if you will, it rolls out with those lines.
Just like that.
Which saves on facility staff.
Well, that, that was, you know, that, because that's a labor-intensive thing too.
Absolutely, it is.
Lining things.
It saves getting the lines out of the uniforms to slog.
Yes, as soccer moms, we appreciate.
And also as a soccer mom with a son who suffered three concussions from hitting his head on the ground, I can see where having a rubberized surface would be useful.
That's what's going to be pretty hard at times.
Yeah.
And that, that safety piece, piece should really, should
Be number one.
Be top of the list
Yeah.
As you're selling this project.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, Sandy, go ahead.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero. And again, thank you for all your efforts and
Thank you.
And we appreciate generosity of our community to be able to help us get our first synthetic field.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we have one more item of the special board
We do, hang on a minute.
I guess we'll.
I move that the computer leasing agreement with Providence Capital Network as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
What we're looking at is a lease proposal for the, the very recent computer purchase that we made. And we have done leasing, this would be the third time that we've done computer leasing in the district. And really, the part of the leasing is, is that, you know, while the value of the, the computers themselves were $2.1 million, our payment, our payment through the leasing is, will be $257,000 less than what the actual cost is. And the reason why there's a, why, what creates that difference of, you know, why with the lease are we paying, are we able to pay $257,000 less than outright purchasing them? Is that at the end of the three-year life of the computers, the computers go back to the leasing company. And where they are taking the risk that when they get those back in three years, they will be able to resell them on whatever, you know, they have the, all the markets, they can go sell these computers. And they're taking the risk that they will actually sell them for more money than that difference of 257,000. The other thing with the leasing company is that they will also come and they will package all of the computers and they will take care of, of packaging them and taking those computers back. And they will also, again, you know, erase anything that needs to be on the computers. And we know that we have some computers that really don't have a hard drive, but, but that they will take care of those computers at the end of those three years. And at the end of the three years, we, you know, we have the option to give them back. We also have the option to continue to lease them at an additional cost. Or we also have the option of buying the computers at the fair market value. And based on, on the contract we're looking at here, our expectation is after three years, we will be giving those computers back and we will be on a three-year cycle of replacing computers, like we kind of were at before the referendum back in 2010, where then we bought all of our computers for a couple of years and now we're getting back to that leasing proposal that, again, kind of spreads out the costs over a three-year period. So, again, we have done a lot of work, again, with Providence Capital Network and they are, do a lot of work in the, in the state of Wisconsin. And again, we think this would be, would be the way to go as far as the purchase of the computers by doing a, a three-year lease.
So we approved, I think, three bids for those sets of computers. So does the leasing company then buy them from the company that we approved the bid for?
They, they will actually pay the invoices from the companies we bought the computers from.
Oh, okay.
So as we get the computers, they will pay the vendors.
For the cost of
For the cost of
That we approved in our bid.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, Sandy, Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero. Do we move to?
Yes.
Yes, we move to
Yeah.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, special board meeting is over. We will then call the regular board meeting work session to order. I'd like to say that we have six board members present. Chris Wagner is excused. I'm also joined at the table by two intercity student council members. Lauren Entlinger from Preble High School and Priyanka Navani, who's the president of intercity student council, she's also from Preble. Welcome. And also, we are joined by many members of the administrative team and to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfelder, superintendent, and Sandy Heller, our board secretary. We normally have an open forum at this point in our meeting. I don't have any sheets, but this is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board? Seeing done, we'll move to our teaching and learning work session, which will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have three discussion items this evening. The first one is the Head Start self-assessment report.
And Sally is here.
We owe this to Sally to be first on the agenda
I am. I'm glad I brought her over today. I appreciate it. Not that I don't enjoy sitting here.
Yes.
Previously, we came to the board with a report with a new federal regulation and to be in compliance. We came earlier with the content here and Sally is here to provide the actual report on the cycle that it will be moving forward in order to be in compliance with the federal regulations. Sally?
Correct. It is a yearly regulation that we conduct self-assessment of our own Head Start program in various areas to ensure that we're in compliance with all Head Start federal regulations. We came to you in December with the current year, or I should say, the February through March 2013 self-assessment, when we discovered that it was a regulation to have that approved by the school board, we came forward in December with that report. Then soon after, in January, we began the self-assessment of this year's program. So the report you were given here for tonight's agenda, it is the self-assessment that we've just recently completed. We are instructed to assess all areas of our program. We develop teams of staff and parents. Mary Franz is also included as, as our school board lays onto the program, as well as the district administration of Dan Melberg and Terry Willams. So we spent two months assessing our program and then we create a summary of the program's strengths and the areas of weakness that we find and put together a self-improvement, or an improvement plan that we begin to work on immediately through next school year. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have with that plan.
Any questions? Mike?
Sally, this is really a very thorough report and I congratulate you and your staff and parents putting it together. Does this, do you have to send this to the federal, federal start people or what do, specifically do you do with this other than present it to us?
I do include it in the grant application to, that goes to the regional office and then that goes on to the federal government. We have an onsite review coming up in three weeks, the week of April 28th. And the self-assessment is one document that the review team will review with me.
So they might take this and it might spark some questions in their mind when their team comes here, correct?
It could.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary?
Sally, can you expound on how you have resolved the issue of the 70 students on a waiting list?
Yes, we have to create a selection criteria when we accept children into the Head Start program. So for instance, if 500 children apply, we have set criteria in accepting those children. And we put their, their risk factors into a computer program that generates a score for each child. So when there's an opening in Head Start, we start at the top and take the child with most risk. For years, we've always given four-year-olds a higher priority than accepting three-year-olds into our program because we wanted to catch those four-year-olds prior to kindergarten and figured we'd get the three-year-olds the following year. Since 4K has come to the district, we've had fewer four-year-olds in our program because some families are choosing the route of 4K. However, we still have this large waitlist of three-year-olds trying to get into the program. So through a lot of discussion with preschool administration and staff and our regional support office, we came up with a plan to take our four-year-old applicants and meet with the parent, talk with the parent and encourage them to, or more or less, send them to the 4K program. And we're allowed to do that even though they are a Head Start income eligible family because there are four-year-old services in this district. And then that opens up the additional spots for our three-year-olds. And our data has shown that children that have two years of preschool prior to kindergarten make greater gains than those that have one. So we're, we're excited to extend three-year-old services in our program. And what we were able to do is take our selection criteria that I described and give more points to our three-year-olds. And that is approved by our policy council, parent board, and it's also included in another manual or document that you will get around June that you'll be approving in July that includes that criteria.
So you're projecting that we will not have a waiting list in the fall?
We are projecting not to have any waiting list.
That's great.
That is.
It is great.
Sally, what percentage of your four-year, they start at three, they move to four, what percentage go to 4K versus stay with you for the fourth?
Well, of the 341 children, we enroll about two-thirds our four-year-olds every year. So we have about, we currently have 124 three-year-olds in our program. The majority, about 90%, will remain in Head Start. If they enter as a three-year-old, they will roll over into the four-year-old program. For this year, what we're going to do with the 124 three-year-olds is we're going to allow them to roll into Head Start because our families are told when they enroll that they can stay for two years. So we thought we would take this year to educate our community and our staff and our school board, our community partners, that the four-year-olds from now on will move on to 4K. So basically, in our school district, you have a three-year-old child that meets the income requirements, you go to Head Start. You have a four-year-old child, you go to 4K. Five-year-old child, 5K. And it's just kind of a shift. And we thought we would take this year again to educate our families about that. Now, we do have collaborations within Head Start with both special education departments and the 4K departments. And we've met with the administration from those departments, they do want us to remain, you know, they do want us to enroll some four-year-olds. So we thought what we would do is about a, is a shift, about two-thirds three-year-olds and a third four-year-olds from now on. Because we do need some of those fours. And we've identified that there are certainly families that enroll as a three-year-old that are so needy that we want to be able to offer the services to the neediest in Head Start. So it should be a win-win situation for everybody.
Good, good. Any other questions?
Just have a quick question. The Head Start Learning Center, which building is that again?
That's the J. Don.
It is?
Yes.
That's what it's called now?
Saint Peter and Paul, we're, we're first floor.
So it's Head Start Learning Center is the name of it?
Yes, yes. It is. We have six classrooms there, about 200 children.
It's a, it's a lovely space. I encourage people to go visit.
Yes. It's really worked out good for us.
Nice school.
And then Wolf has worked well.
It's worked beautiful. It really has. The additional staff, especially at that site, is an asset to working with the children and families.
Good. Mary?
And then I was just wondering where we are at with the idea of that model that would include the home visit? Are you, have you made any sense?
I talked a little further with Terry and Dan last week about that. The sequester cuts that we had last year, now we're getting back. And what that results in for our program is $128,000 back into our, our grant. We need to reverse the cut that we made last year, which was 17 children. So we are going to be adding 17 children back into our program, three-year-olds. We do need to find some classroom space for those children. There is another option. When you, when you are a grantee agency for a Head Start program, you have various options. You can be a home-based program where most of your programming is in the home. You can, which is similar to like a birth-to-three program. You can be a center-based program, which is what we currently are, where the children attend school four half-days and then they get four to five home visits and by the home visitor as well as parent-teacher conferences and home visits by the teacher. Then there's a combination option, which is a combination of those two options. The children attend two half-days and they receive two home visits per month by a certified home visitor that, the home visit is an hour and a half, it has to be with the parent and the child. And it's an extension of the goals and the readiness activities that the teacher's doing in the classroom.
I understand that the district did that previously.
We did. We did that, oh, when I first came to the district. So about 14 years ago, we eliminated that option. And we were, we were finding it a little more difficult for families to commit to that home visit with more working families. So what, you know, we thought instead of jumping into that, we would maybe take next year to really explore that as, as another option.
And the bottom line is, is the space an issue?
Well, right, you can, what you can do is you can have, you can actually enroll 60 children into one classroom versus 34. So because your children are only attending two half-days. So you'd have 15 Monday, Wednesday morning, 15 Tuesday, Thursday morning, 15 Monday, Wednesday afternoon, 15 Tuesday, Thursday afternoon.
You'd probably have to continue to revisit that
Yes.
And be flexible.
Right. And I know there are parents who's very young, just three-year-olds in August enroll and they're very nervous about letting them, you know, letting go of them to school and that might really opt to have a two-day-a-week program versus a four-day. So we thought we would survey our families and, and really take this year to explore that option and, and possibly revisit it next year. It wouldn't increase our overall numbers of children.
Are you continuing to look at other venues for a classroom that's a work in progress?
It is a work in progress, yes.
It's all part of that planning forward and that's why we really wanted to look at the, the different options. at the different options and do some planning, looking at space, looking at programming, getting some parent input and involvement, and really be thoughtful as we move forward to make sure we're offering the highest quality options that we're able to offer.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Now, there is a governance request that we approve the Head Start self-assessment. So this will come back as an action item in two weeks. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Terry.
It's not even six o'clock.
That's right.
It's 10 to 6:00.
It's not even, it's not even six.
You can just skip out of the room. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Our second discussion item is Equity and Education Committee. We've joined at the table from Jennifer Hakes. If you have, she wants her team. If you want your team, we can.
You want to bring your team up?
We can make room.
Bye.
Okay.
No, bye.
Could you at least introduce your team?
Why, can I introduce to you some of the community members that I've met with, who had a chance to look at our application? Crystal Thomas is in the room. Peter Callag and Robert Langley.
Thank you for coming.
All right. So I'm here to inform the board on the creation of the Equity and Education Committee, and we are interested in forming the committee for two reasons. I'm not allowed to. For two reasons.
Yeah, unlike me, you're not, you're very soft-spoken.
The first is that the Department of Justice came back in to visit with us again about the issue that we had in 2006. They did not find us to be in, in any fault at this point. However, they encouraged us to go ahead and work with the community members, they called them, to make sure that we built a relationship. So we created a new document in January 2014, and part of the document states that we will have a multicultural group between parents, community members, and the district. Another reason is that I have been conducting structured learning interviews as a part of my onboarding with the district, with district administrators, parents, and community members. And the number-one identified thing that we need to address in relation to equity, based on 77% of the members that I spoke with, is that we need to try to build relationships with our parents and community members. So I wanted to share that information with you all, and see if you had any questions or comments on the report.
Questions, comments? Celeste?
No, yeah, Jennifer, I think this looks good. I think especially with your onboarding questions, you have given some heft to what a lot of people in the community say about us, so I think that's very important. And I thought everything in the report was, was right on, right on target. And I appreciate the community members coming by, too. I know everybody back there, so. Thank you.
I noticed 59% cited customer service at the schools.
Yes.
That's the second highest concern. Did people elaborate on?
Do you mean by that?
Yeah.
They did. Parents and community members are feeling like when they go into the buildings, they're not greeted well. And we're addressing that. I'm going to have Gary Howard come in in August and train our clerical staff on culturally responsive practices.
Okay, okay.
So we're on top of that one also.
Good.
Yes.
Just as a follow-up to, in speaking with Jennifer, it really varies from building to building.
It does, definitely.
How, how warm and welcoming it feels. And so, we recognize the importance of all families and all parents feeling welcome. So that's, that's a priority as we move forward. And, and we'll be having specific conversations, because it really becomes a performance issue for, for a staff member if in fact they are not, the receptionist means reception and what the expectations are.
That's right.
So, so as part of that, I would assume that we'll also be looking more specifically at the whole job description, what the expectations are, and chief receptionist nodding her head. So that's, that's a part of the retool and retrain as well.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think that person at the front desk many times is the most critical person in that building for a parent or a community member, particularly if they're nervous about going into that school.
That's right.
And they're not greeted warmly, then I think that, that colors their perception of the entire school rightly or wrongly. So I think that is really a, a critical thing for staff development.
Well, and we had talked about this before with Greg Moss.
Oh, this has been.
And, I mean, I think it's an ongoing issue, and so what that speaks to, and what Jennifer uncovered certainly, was that speaks to continuous improvement, as Mark likes to say, and how people are greeted. Because I will tell you, as a school board member, I have not always been greeted so warmly when I go into some buildings, so.
And I think as we've changed, as we've ramped up security, and people have to ring to be let in, how the person answers that buzzer kind of sets the tone. It tells me whether I'm going to go in there with a smile on my face, or a little bit of a curled lip, but I think, and that's, some of that is just, you know, staff training, professional training, how you do that. But you're right, it has been an issue for, for a while. Brenda?
I'm interested in the third item, which is only 35%, but certainly something that we've been talking about for many years as a board. And I'm interested if there was any specific, when culturally responsive curriculum is a big, you know, a big term and can cover a lot of things, I'm just interested in what, if there were specific examples of, of ways that people thought the curriculum could be improved.
I think they would like to see more of themselves in the curriculum. So when the students are bringing home, particularly English, the reading materials that they bring home, they would like to see a little more diversity in that. I think some of the teachers are very good about including it, and some just kind of stick with what they've been using for the past 20 years. Our Title 17 is fine. They'll buy a collection of books for all the fourth-grade teachers this year that they can use with their curriculum, because Act 31 requires us to make sure that we're including curriculum at a fourth and 10th grade level. And the teachers were using materials, but they were not accurate. And so, instead of trying to continue to give them lists and hope that they will use the materials that we have, we're going to give them to them on behalf of the Title 17.
You know, this is something that came up at the Diversity Club at Prebble. And I think this was maybe last year?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Where, well, about the, the texts in the classroom and the differential between different, you know, you can speak better to that. You know what I'm talking about, right?
Right. We had a race-safe literature-type initiative that our Diversity Leadership Club at Prebble had done, and that was based on the thoughts of the people in our Diversity Leadership Club. So it definitely attests to what many of the community members are also saying, so.
Can you speak, Jennifer, just briefly, a little bit more about the community group that you're moving toward forming in terms of parent group or community group, what that you anticipate will look like, and when you'll have that moving forward, and what kinds of framing and issues will be addressed there? How do you anticipate that working?
We're looking to create a group that will target all of our marginalized families. So we're looking at all of our ethnic minorities, parents of students with disabilities, socioeconomic, we want various socioeconomics, as parents of children who have identified as being a part of the gay community, and our English-language learners. Ideally, the group will target all of our opportunity gaps within the district. So we want to go after our disproportionality in terms of suspensions and expulsions, our disproportionality in terms of AP and gifted and talented programming, and also our WKC scores.
I think one of the things that Jennifer, I know, has been working very closely with is to continuous improvement. No, in, in all reality, it's got to be an all-out concerted, community-wide and internal effort if we're going to close the gaps. And we've talked about it a long time. And I know last year, when we met with community members and parents, we're ready, we've got to move, because each child that we aren't moving the dial on is a child that is underserved. And that's really acknowledged and recognized, that we are, we have to move forward. It's just not okay. So that's really the pieces, too, is as we examine this, and Jennifer's spent a fair amount of time in, in teaching and learning, both as a professional and now in her current role, that we, and with our data people, that we've got to move that dial. And it's, it's hugely concerning.
I'll call myself. Jennifer, how do you envision getting student input for this committee? And not necessarily as members of the committee, but another, an advisory committee, or?
Yeah, I want to make sure that I have some meetings after we get our parent group and parent-community group up and running, where we have kids come in and just give their input and their thoughts. Ideally, I would like to move the meetings around the district to make it convenient for the parents, so that they're not always traveling here to the district office, and we can open it up to students when we're in their buildings.
Okay, okay. Because we value the student input.
Yes.
At our meetings. 99% of the time.
Is that 1%?
Is that 1%?
No.
Andrew?
Why, why would you not include students in the actual committee membership?
I thought about that, Andrew, but I, I think that the problem we're having right now is more with building our relationships with the parents and community members. And I was trying to get a tight cohesive group of adults in a room to work together first. Doesn't mean down the line we want to include students.
I understand that.
If I could add to that, too, having been a participant in coordination of, of groups, sometimes the topics are complex in different ways, where it's important that the adults address things, and, but to always be mindful, we used to invite student groups all the time and participate. So, so it wasn't the full meeting sometimes, it was, you know, for feedback in different ways. So I anticipate through time, because there may be a core group, but I would assume, depending upon the topics and issues and things, there will be offshoots and, and other people being pulled into the conversation, because it's a big conversation that needs to be held.
Any other questions or comments? Mary?
Would that be something that we could look at doing, bringing in different groups from our schools that are diversity-based?
Oh, definitely, definitely, yes.
To different core meetings?
Yes, definitely.
I mean, I, that's a really good idea, because Prebble's diversity group is very, very active. West's is, is, I think, you know, Amy is very, she's very aggressive, I think, in a good way. And Eben is working, doing some good work at West High School. Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with what's going on at East and Southwest, but those are certainly good places to start, because you have students, first of all, especially at Prebble, I haven't visited the West High one, but the Prebble one is a very diverse group of students across many Winchester, Great Prairie, been in for a long time. And actually, do you know if there's a group at, at East High School, diversity group?
I'm not sure. I would imagine there is, just because it's such a.
There is one. I don't know much about what they do. I do know they have one, though.
They do have one. But I mean, these are students who are very interested, and they're also just super eager to act, quite frankly. They're looking for a project, so.
Yeah. Because while all the context, while all the things that happen within the meetings might not apply directly to the students, while the students might not understand everything that's going on in the meetings, much like many of the things that go on here, I don't understand much of what goes on here. No, but for the things that do, I do think.
You're in good company.
We do have our input, because it is the things that directly affect us, so.
Andrew?
I'd like to see there be a, you know, be a defined and consistent role for students. I'm, I'm skeptical of anything where the, there's a committee where the students have a lesser or an everything-but-blank role, except for certain very narrow things like reviewing restricted information and so forth. So if they're not going to be on the committee, I'd like to see it be a regular thing, because it creates, can create an appearance of, whether true or not, it can create an appearance of lip service, if it looks like we're just picking the optimal times for the students or the safe, you know, again, not, not saying that we would, but it could create the appearance that we're just picking the safe meetings to put some, some student faces here. I mean, we're, we consistently have two students here, whether, whether it's likely to be a relatively light or relatively contentious meeting.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none. We appreciate your report, and there's no governance request for this report. Thank you very much. Jennifer, and thank you to your committee members who attended.
Yes. Thank you.
We have one more discussion item, the scheduling of a board retreat.
My gosh, that'll be 45 minutes.
No, it will not. We are going to show the public that we can do this in a civilized, quick manner.
Well, it's completely civilized. It's conflictual.
The, the most, the challenging thing with this retreat is that it's time-sensitive in that the, the administration needs our input and feedback, I think is the right term. This is on plans they have for updating and changing some things with vision cards and our goal-setting process, and all of those things that we've been using. And it needs to be done timely, so that we're ready for the school data retreats that happen in early June. So we really have very few dates. We have one date.
Lay it on.
Was that the 28th? Which is the 28th of April. And I know Chris won't be here, and Mary can't come, but we can't do May 12th, because Michelle's out of town.
Are the rest of us available on the 28th?
So then the question is, who else might be available on the 28th?
I can be available.
Yeah, I'm good.
Andrew?
Yes.
Celeste?
What time, Brenda? Is it?
We haven't decided yet.
I, I think so. I don't have a golf schedule yet, though, so, but I don't think that's going to matter so much.
No.
Well, but let's see, so let's just, let me just think.
Brenda, you're good on the 28th?
I'm good.
I'm just trying to think, can we, I'm just trying to think of a time.
I can be flexible with the time.
I can come anytime.
Yeah, I mean, I think a little earlier is better than a little later, for me. So, earlier meaning.
Except Andrew, how does that work for you?
Except Andrew, right.
Seven. I'll see what I can do. Don't work anything out.
Andrew, what about you? What's your?
Are we talking, are you talking like the four o'clock range, or middle of the day?
No, 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 we're talking like the 4:30, as opposed to 5:30.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
4:30?
4:30.
That would be better, I think, for me.
4:30. Mike, you're okay for 4:30?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, Brenda?
What we're finding with the strategic roadmap is, as we look to really nailing some of the, the school improvement planning, we really need to revisit some of the areas that we started out with in terms of strategic directions, because the reality is, you know, this year we started with some pieces that we're focused on, on, you know, the monitoring reports you've seen, you know, posting learning targets and whatnot. But the reality is, behind the strategic directions, what we're trying to do is create vision cards that really have metrics that make sense. And right now, we're just not where we want them to be.
Okay.
And as we, as we hold ourselves accountable, and our building principals, and people who lead programs, we need a little more clarity, is really what we're seeing. And that will afford us, and we need to have that conversation with you, since it's your strategic roadmap that we are moving, so.
Okay.
It'll be great. Thank you.
What do we say?
4:30.
4:30 on the 28th.
On the 28th, which.
And five of us will be there, perhaps six.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
And that concludes our work session. We are plowing through this as if Wisconsin were in the playoffs.
Don't, please don't bet, that's a painful mention. Don't do that.
It's painful.
It is painful.
But, okay, so thinking of, but the thing is, it was so nice to see, not mine, but it was so nice to see all those young men and their parents in the stands, you know, it was a great game, they gave it all, it was, it was good.
Okay, let's not go all Pollyanna on this, because we're still in mourning here, okay? Thank you. Brenda?
All right. Next, we'll move to our operation, or sorry, our organizational support work session, and that will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
So we have under, we have nothing under discussion items. Our first business and finance item is the purchase of former Job Service Building at 1148 Main. 1148 Main Street.
As we speak, we have some staff that are currently at the City of Green Bay for the rezoning of that property. We also have seen today that the offer to purchase has been accepted by the, who we're buying from, buying the building from, if that's the direction we go. I think there was a one-page document in the update that talked about exactly, you know, what items are going to be in that building.
Okay.
And again, we will be doing some remodeling as we get into spring here to be getting ready for the next school year.
I mean, for the public's benefit and for the benefit of those watching on TV, could staff just give us a brief highlight of what that building will be used for and where those students and staff will be coming from?
One of the things this building will afford us is the opportunity to really expand and customize the educational opportunities for those students who are currently placed in one of the alternative ed programs. We have some students that stay with us for a very short time and we have some students that stay with us for quite a while. And this will give us more opportunities to really focus on whether they're going towards a high school diploma, post-secondary job skills, or perhaps GED. So that's one thing this building will do. We're going to really focus and enhance our online educational opportunities so we stay more competitive with the districts surrounding us because that is a critical piece in today's world and what students and families are looking for. By having one site, we'll be able to really pool together our resources and utilize them as well as our staff more effectively because we won't be so disjointed and all over the place, which will really be great. And it'll really help our students in giving them what they need to be successful. Our staff will become a staff and that will give them more opportunities to, for professional development and to grow as a team and support each other, which is something that is not currently available because we're all over the place. There are a number of facilities that are going to be housed in this building. All of the, two of the elementary self-contained programs will be located there. One will remain at Beaumont and one will go to Eisenhower, I believe. So there will be two elementary self-contained programs at the current job center. The alternative instructional program, which is our middle school self-contained for students who committed expellable offenses, will be not there next year because we're looking at a three-year phase, but they will eventually in the second year of programming and providing transfers to the new building. They are currently located at Trinity, which is just on the block. Curry Lane, which has two programs right now, one is located in the family service building that we rent and one is currently housed also at Trinity and that's our middle school and high school programs for our chronically mentally ill students. They will remain at Trinity next year, again, in that three-year phase. The repo program, which is the Reach Educational and Personal Objectives Program, which is for students who have, again, have behavior or mental issues that we currently had out at one of the Boys and Girls Club, will be moving to the new building if it's approved. And that is currently at Trinity. We have the Chance for Change East and West, which is housed at the Boys and Girls Club on either side of the river. And those programs will be at the new building starting next year along with the two, again, elementary programs. The following staff, equipment and storage, we can never have enough storage, the occupational and physical therapists, which are currently at Lincoln and Sullivan Elementary Schools and have gun road just packed to the roof. Those different items and pieces will be housed at the new building. Program support district, program support teachers, which are currently in the district office and at various sites, will also call that their home, home base, as well as the special ed technology lab and equipment, which is currently in the district office, will also be there.
Good, thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Thanks, Andrew. I'm like looking, forgot like who's running. Andrew?
I was about to call you. Go ahead.
So, so, you know, there's lots that we had talked about in terms of the building. We talked about funding. We also talked about how the building looks on the outside, some requirements that I would like to see in terms of making it look like a school. So tonight, we are just going to move this forward.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
And so by the next board meeting, I would like to see some more information, especially how we're going to make this building look more school-like. And we had discussed some of those things before.
Because I think our thought would be to have approved it in at the next board meeting.
Yes, that would be great. I'm just making sure that...
I was thinking Mike was here, but I think he may have...
He came and...
He's at the zoning club.
He's at the zoning club.
Right.
He knows that we need to do that.
Yes, yes. I just, yeah, that has been discussed.
We talked about landscaping.
Right.
So would he bring forward a proposal with some, perhaps some renderings, just so we could physically see? I think that's important because it is a school. And one of the pieces were, we will no longer be leasing a renting space at how many sites purchase this?
It will be one, two, three different sites currently. And the year after, we will not be renting any sites.
So it really, it not only consolidates programs, but over time, it would be a cost savings?
Absolutely.
Not only from a rental perspective, but also from a perspective of staff?
Correct.
Okay.
So that all the more reason for it to actually look like what it is.
Exactly.
On the outside.
So that people feel compelled if they want to go there.
And I know that the board has expressed the, that they would like the students to have input in regards to naming the school.
Absolutely.
And so we are moving towards that as well.
Good. And just for point of clarification, when you state that we'll no longer be renting sites for your programs, now we will continue to be renting sites for like St. Phillips and St. Peter and Paul because for the six people who watch this show, it might rile a lot.
Just for those programs.
Right, for those programs, just for...
So just, you said three next year and then what is the total number of buildings we rent?
We currently rent Curry Lane, which is part of Family Services on Irwin Street. We rent the Boys and Girls Club, East and West, and we rent Trinity right now. So four programs will in total be moved.
And roughly, how many students is that?
We're looking at between 65 and 80 students.
And then you will be Kathy on-site as the principal?
Correct. And we will also have an SRO, we will have PSTs, we will have, who's not going to be there full-time?
You'll have support people?
Right, absolutely.
Because you can name all those letters and what?
I know.
That's right, we'd have to have an acronym conversation.
More acronyms than you want to know about. But I think the building also provides us extra space to expand some of the online things that we've talked about as a district or other things that may be coming. It's very spacious, allows us lots of options.
We'll just keep our fingers crossed on the zoning meeting tonight.
I have good thoughts.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move that forward to next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the only item under organizational support. We'll move on to human resources and we have first item, English language learner student achievement coordinator job description.
Can you please detail, help to write this job description? And so she's going to tell you a little bit about why it's here and what the need is.
Good evening. Currently, we have one Spanish bilingual support person in the district, Jennifer Tremblay, and she's come before the board numerous occasions, curriculum, program things. And she's wearing many hats right now. She's working with bilingual instructional coaches, the bilingual interventionist, she's working with RTI, she's working on the district core team, which is a group of the bilingual psychologists, bilingual speech and language pathologists, the bilingual program support teacher. They're looking at all of those students who are coming through the RTI system for the SLD requirement. So she's wearing numerous hats. And the position right now, the work is large. And even though there are less Spanish bilingual students than English students in the district, we really need to divide that work into two. So we've kind of divided Jen Tremblay's current responsibilities and she will continue on the program side of it, continue working with the coaches. This position is going to be working more with the bilingual interventionists, the RTI system, looking, working with schools as they're looking at their data from their bilingual probes and their progress monitoring. And this person will be on that core team. So just, this is an additional position, but it is budget neutral. We fit it into the current budget so the ELL staffing is not going up at all next year. We've done some trimming to make this fit because we've seen a definite need.
This is a teaching position, so when the issue, the person would be issued a 191-day contract, that's within our teaching.
Brenda?
Is it just working with our Spanish students?
No, it's called the ELL student achievement coordinator because through that core team, any English language learner, they could be Russian, Somali, Hmong, comes through that team.
Okay.
Most of their work will be with the Spanish bilingual, given that's the majority of our students in our program right now. And currently, we do not have somebody, if a student does need those tier-three interventions and they are in secondary schools, we do not have anybody currently to deliver those interventions. So Jen is going out and doing that as well and that would fall under this person. So we're finding as the SLD is coming, there's more and more work that needs to be done in terms of, in terms of Spanish.
Another big part of the role is identifying some of the screeners and probes as Julie was mentioning, and that's very time-consuming as you have to find the ones that are research-based and effective for English language learners. So that's another big part of the position.
Other questions? I'll call it myself. What did you cut or trim to make room for this?
We trimmed a little bit out of elementary ESL teachers and then part of this position is going to be paid for out of district Title III funds and that would continue every year, that part in Title III.
I guess my question would be, yeah, I'm wondering, how did you make the decision whether to cut and stay budget-neutral or advocate for an additional fractional position? Or was that directed?
In looking at what we truly need, I did feel we could shore up in the elementary ESL area. We are seeing more and more collaborating between our elementary ESL teachers and the mainstream teachers, especially as our bilingual program moves to units. All of the teachers are, the bilingual teachers are teaching the same units at the same time. So it's really making collaborating, the ESL teachers know what that academic language is in all of the second grade classrooms at the same time. So they're pushing in to the classroom, so a lot of the services now, it's not pull-out, it's push-in into the classroom. So we were able to trim a little bit off of each school, a point one here, a point one there. Schools will be absolutely fine and I think the people who are on cabinet with me know that I'm always one who does advocate for additional staff, but this one, I truly believe it's absolutely fine.
If I could offer, and maybe it's a matter of context, I think the phrase was able to capture some additional staffing would make sense here because it wasn't as much about eliminating jobs or positions, it was really looking at that process and the staffing process comprehensively and finding out, still meeting the needs of the students, still meeting the needs of the adults in the buildings, how could you capture some staffing in a budget or in a fiscally responsible manner?
I guess, right, my concern would be if we're, I want to make sure we're leading with the needs of the students. And if, if the needs of the students is, was, for example, add three positions and what we did was add one because of the budget, but there was sincere difference of opinion, then I think that's a, that's a discussion that needs to happen. But it sounds like that wasn't the case here, it should be a pretty transparent thing in part of the schools.
Correct. I have added staff the last few years and we're at a point now where we are maintaining and we're actually even exiting a few more students. So I continue to monitor staffing and we do what's best for kids, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we will move that forward and then moving along. We have the special education, thank you. We have the special education compliance specialist job description.
Claudia Hendrickson would like to be here, but as you heard, she's at the zoning meeting.
That's right.
But she's advancing this position because she sees a need to make sure that we're in compliance of IDEA. And specifically, you'll notice in this job description that there is a deep focus on making sure that our IEPs are meeting compliance with federal, state and district policies and procedures. So she is, would be asking from her budget to have two people fill this role if this job description is approved and if it, you know, we are still talking about budget, but one for the east side and one for the west side. So there would be two people hired for this. Kim, I know you're familiar with it because she's discussed it with you. I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I think just that as the DPI and all of the federal and state regulations become more and more complicated and we're anticipating more and more changes in addition being audited soon, we want to make sure that we're compliant in all of the areas that we need to be. I would say we continue on a regular basis to find IEPs that probably were written but do not comply, or maybe IEPs that are written that we don't, aren't following as we should. And to have Jackie and Amy try to stay on top of that as the executive directors when there are a multitude of them throughout the district is very difficult. So this position, we'll get a set of eyes on those and then that will be able to help those teachers make sure that when we're writing these, we're compliant and that we're professionally, have a professional learning that we need to make sure we're doing what we need to do.
Celeste?
Yeah, I mean, I think this position is definitely needed, but I have some questions just about the qualifications and what you're looking for. So qualifications say, looking for someone who has a license and a special education teaching license and a minimum of three years' successful special education teaching experience. Then, but in terms of the position purpose, it says, "To ensure that all schools and service providers are in compliance with the statutory requirements of IDEA, state standards and district policies governing the operation of special education programs, including IEP procedural compliance." It seems to me that the way, the position purpose doesn't match the qualifications. It seems like you're looking for someone who actually has a lot of experience writing IEPs, talking about IEPs in a, in a way that is, that breeds accountability, but also has a philosophy behind it, and then someone who understands the statutory requirements. Now, we do have Melissa, right? But I mean, I would think we want someone who needs to, who be able to look at this without having to ask Melissa 1,400 questions, you know? So that it doesn't seem to me in my mind, please explain to me how I'm wrong, that the qualifications do not match the position.
I think the key is that we have people in positions who should also be helping with that. So we've got an executive director, we have Brenda now in the department with an administrative title or responsibilities. We have Claudia. So I think we have Kathy, who's working a lot of that. So I think those expertise, those pieces... So I think those expertise, those pieces that we're looking for, that should know the statutes and know all of the procedures and the policies, we have those people in position to work and support with these folks. What these people need to do is be able to put their eyes on an IEP and have the professional learning around what needs to be in the IEP, how does that align with what we are doing with district policies and statutes, almost the checklist piece of it, to make sure we're in compliance. And we already have those other eyes from a management position to make sure we're following those other pieces.
But I'm afraid I'm still not feeling minimum of three years' successful special education teaching experience as someone who is necessarily really qualified to have those eyes on the IEP and do everything that you said. I mean, and especially since, I mean, I completely appreciate, going back to Jerry's days as the special education director, you know exactly how split that team was, the executive team, in terms of, you know, trying to be everywhere, especially at once. And I totally, I totally understand what you're saying, but it seems to me that it is a person who really understands some of what Amy and Jackie know, and so that that can really be the frontline person, you know?
Is it just the years?
Is it the years or?
We could add something to say that it's required that they have substantial knowledge or knowledge of.
Special ed law and compliance issues.
Writing and reviewing IEPs.
Yes, something like that.
To me, compliance and teaching don't necessarily correlate.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
If you're a great special ed teacher, you may not know compliance requirements.
Except it's the special ed teachers who are writing the IEPs.
You should, yeah. Well, there's professional learning about, and whoever gets the position, because to me, it's very complicated, it's very key.
Well, and the laws keep changing, and I think that that's the piece when you talk about compliance. You know, years ago, a lot of the IEPs were focused, for example, if you had a behavior disordered student, it would be focused on behavior. That's not the case anymore, which is, which is good, because we're moving towards standard-based IEPs, and that, that really is critical, focused around student achievement, which makes a whole lot of sense to me. So, I mean, I think that there are pieces, there are some teachers, and depending upon where they work, a lot of the IEPs and the initial evaluations are not even done by our teachers anymore. They're done by program support teachers and people outside of the teacher. And so that's why there's, there's all sorts of, it's the reevals that are done within the building. So we've got some different things going, and, and I think that we're just going to try, Claudia has worked very hard, and she's not here, but is working very hard to pull the pieces together back again, so that we have, everybody has a clear understanding of our current realities.
I totally get that. I just, you know, it goes back, Jean, to what we say that we want matches some person who is out there. And I think the more, we are public, so the more specific we are, without, as Andrew says, without writing a job description to fit one person, right? There is, there is a happy middle ground there, and so I just, I just want us to, even looking at this as a non-special education person, it seems like a mismatch. So however, you know, talk to Claudia, this is her, her bailiwick, see what she says about adding something to, to help find someone who has some more affinity.
Well, and I think if she were here, she would agree with you completely, because the quality of the person in the position is key.
It's critical.
And I think we also have to sometimes be careful, though, that we don't make those qualifications so tight and rigid that we dump the applicants.
Totally.
So you want to be able to get yourself a pool to, to ask those really difficult questions in the interviews and the screening process of whether or not they can do the job, so.
I could work with her to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good point. Thank you.
All right, other questions on this job description? All right, we'll move that forward. Next item, Employee Handbook Insurance and Fringe Benefits Section.
We have one more job description.
Bilingual Family Engagement Coordinator.
And Jennifer Heaton.
The order was different on the paper.
Oh.
All right, the Equity Office would like to request a bilingual family education coordinator. The coordinator would work with all of our marginalized groups within the district, but we would like somebody that's Spanish-speaking to help target some of our underrepresented populations. We have, right now, 26% of our population is Hispanic, and we're having a gap with our parents who cannot read, write, or speak English. So they're calling in, having needs, and going into a drop box because they have to wait for somebody from the office to get back to them. They were sending them through the proper protocols as far as contacting their teachers first and then their principals, but when they felt like they're not getting their needs met, we're having some issues that are starting to blow up for us that could be easily handled if there wasn't a language and culture grab.
This position will be 12 months and will be a salaried position. We are not necessarily requiring a bachelor's degree because there may be a person who meets the qualifications Jennifer is looking for, who has a great deal of experience, but hasn't finished college. So we didn't want to narrow the qualifications to require the bachelor's degree. And in terms of the salary, I think that too will depend upon the person's work history and what they bring to the table in education, so we haven't really put a salary range on it. But this would be one of those exempt professional positions that are not part of a bargaining unit, but they're not management either. They report through to a director-level position.
Chelsea?
So Jennifer, why wouldn't you require bilingual skills? Why is that desired and not required?
Because I'm not sure that I will find a candidate who is fluent. I'm going to have Julia, Julie and Claudia sit in, and if I can find somebody that is at least fluent in Spanish speaking, but not necessarily reading and writing, and they're a strong candidate who can communicate with the families, I think we would definitely consider taking them. So when I look at bilingual, I look at overall reading, writing, and speaking.
So, but you're not looking for someone who has lots of great experience working with families and has a bachelor's degree, but isn't bilingual?
No. I would hope that the person could communicate with the families, but that's what I need. I need somebody who's Spanish-speaking. I'm attending right now Hispanic inter-agency meetings, and you say Casa Alba, and if I have someone there who is able to translate, I can participate in those meetings. However, if I need to meet with someone from one of the agencies who maybe gives me a business card, but that person is not Spanish-speaking, or they need to put me in contact with a family, and they don't have a translator, and I don't have one available here, then I need to wait around to get somebody over to the office so I can help that parent.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like, it seems like that's a requirement.
It should be up in the requirement.
And I understand what you're talking about, being, you know, being bilingual means being fluent.
Yes.
In various degrees of fluency, but somewhere fluent, maybe near-native.
Yeah.
And then also being literate.
Yes.
Most likely to your own, to, you know, some level of high school or thereabouts, right?
Yeah.
It seems to me that, I mean, we clearly need people who are literate in a second language to be working in a school district. It seems like that's a requirement of the job, even though I understand what you're saying about being a little cautious about finding someone who is bilingual truly. But I also think with the, you know, because I'm going to put this, as soon as this is ready to go, I'm sending this out myself, so I think there are people in the community who would fit that if we make it a requirement. I don't know how other board members feel.
I just think by virtue of the fact that it's a bilingual, bilingual family engagement coordinator position, you would want to make that a requirement. And for those very reasons you expressed. Is there a downside to making it a requirement?
From an HR?
It would take a little longer to fill, but I think, you know, I think in our community, we welcome people who are interested in it and.
If you, yeah. I'm fine with. Doing the bachelor's degree, I mean, making that optional and, and making the bilingualism required.
Yeah, I think we, you described the person you need, and if it takes an extra three or four months to, or whatever it takes to find that person, I think it's worth waiting.
And you'd be happier.
Rather than filling it with somebody that just doesn't quite fit the need that you just described because they don't speak Spanish.
Right. I actually even know someone, to be honest. Yeah.
Wonderful.
Okay.
So you'll move that to the required. I think it's a really important idea.
You could, actually, one, you could make it, the required could be some, however you describe it, you know, ability to speak Spanish, and then desired could be that bilingual level of, you know, almost native, you know, speaking in both languages, kind of a thing Because if you say bilingual required, then, you know, people will say, well, I'm not really bilingual, I, you know, but yet they would function probably quite well at a social conversational level.
I'll work, we'll work together and get the language changed and make that change.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else on that? We'll, now we'll move ahead to the Employee Handbook Insurance and Fringe Benefits Section.
This is a, you have a memo recommending that we change, just a, it's actually, looks like a minor change, but it really isn't. It's a change to the structure of the insurance, requiring that we provide insurance to those who work 30 hours or more rather than 30.2 hours. And this is driven by the Affordable Care Act. This would not, if you, when you, if you choose to vote on this in two weeks, this would not go into effect until July 1st, which is the beginning of our new insurance plan year. And then we would be positioned to meet the requirements of the Affordable Care Act, which we must, beginning in 2015. So we will, if, we're asking that as long as we're rolling out new insurance, we would also include this. Right now, for the number of current employees, we don't have a lot who will be affected, but we are going to have to take a look at those who are substitutes, who are working on a limited term, and they may raise to 30 hours per week and may qualify for insurance under the Affordable Care Act.
So it brings more people in instead of potentially than less.
Yes, it's more inclusive rather than less.
Yep.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, we'll move that change forward.
There's, excuse me, Andrew, been a request for, to take a break.
True. Yeah, I agree.
Is everybody, okay.
So moved.
Take, we'll take a five-minute break and then. All right, I think we'll get started with the, I'll turn it back over to Andrew. It was like, please back.
Okay. So our next, our next item is the Employee Handbook Insurance and Fringe Benefits Section. So we'd like to receive an overview of that, and then we'll take board questions.
Okay. We, we have at the table Jennifer Vincent, manager of Employee Services, has joined me, and then you have Met Cindy Van Aston, who is our consultant with M3. I wanted to just go through with you some of the reasons why we are bringing a recommendation, which will come to you in the form of a motion, hopefully in two weeks, why we're bringing this forward to you. There are really a number of reasons. One, we want to maintain a very high-quality benefit plan, our health insurance, that is affordable and sustainable into the future. We want to maintain a good high-level coverage, which we are able to provide to our employees currently. We also want to provide some choice for our employees, because right now, we have one plan, and that plan is rather expensive, and we've had feedback from people to say, is there another option that you could provide us? The other thing is we want to integrate our wellness programs into our insurance. We had a number of years ago, some wellness activities, which people did enjoy, but it was not integrated into the health plan, it was a standalone plan. So the new plan would integrate wellness into our health insurance plan. And then the fourth reason really is, we are, we need to make sure that we're compliant with the Affordable Care Act. Now, we know that that, some of the provisions have changed and still could change, but if we wait until the end when we must be compliant, we would not, I don't think we would be doing a service to the district. So we want to be planning for that now, for the changes that are going to be here next year, 2015, and then eventually moving up to 2018, when the Cadillac tax is supposed to go into effect. So I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer Vincent to talk to you about the plans that we are proposing. We took your questions and hopefully provided some answers for you in that, but we are willing and able to take more questions, and then what we would do is get the answers to you hopefully next week. And then we would write up the final recommendations based on feedback that you have tonight for you before the board meeting. So I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
As Jean mentioned, we're not looking to make any changes to the current plan, the $250 deductible plan. These would be two new plans to offer some choice for employees. The first of those plans is a high-deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account, or HRA, attached to it. With that plan, the in-network deductibles would be $1,500 for a single and $3,000 for family, with the out-of-pocket maximums of $3,000, single, and $6,000, family. And we'd be proposing that the district fund $1,250 into the single plan and $2,250 into the health, into the family plan for the health reimbursement for the first year. And there'd be an additional opportunity for participants to earn money through wellness incentives, right, by doing some wellness activities. They could earn more money into their own HRA plan. The second plan is a minimally essential coverage plan, and that really, what that's focusing on is meeting the requirements of the Affordable Care Act. As Jean mentioned earlier, we expect that we're going to have some substitutes who are going to qualify for insurance, they're going to hit the 30 hours a week, and with the subs that we're paying $10 an hour, we have criteria that we have to meet to have that plan be affordable for those individuals as well as valuable. So the minimally essential coverage meets the criteria as defined by the Affordable Care Act. And in addition, it limits our exposure if and when shared responsibility happens through the Affordable Care Act. So those are the two plans that we'd be offering in addition to the current $250 deductible plan. So are there any questions?
Chelsea?
Yes. Let's talk about the Cadillac tax. So the Cadillac tax is a tax that the employer pays, especially since we are self, actually the insurance company pays if there's no self-insurance, and since we are self-insured, we would pay it, is that correct? For the cost of a plan that is over $10,200 for a single person or $27,500 for a family. Now, in our questions and answers, question two, it says, it's on the entire premium, but isn't it on the difference between the cost of the plan and $27,500?
The tax is everything above that amount.
Right.
But they take the entire premium is what's taxed. So you're correct, anything above and beyond has the 40.
40%. So let, so if our, and then, this is unclear to me, but going back to the questions and answers, number two, it says those thresholds increase 4% annually, so, which I would imagine is not going to stay in stone, so by 2019, that threshold would be $28,600 for a family, and in 2020, $29,744. There's a kind of, like you said, there's a raise every year for that threshold for the Cadillac tax. Okay, so let's do some math. Okay, so let's do some math. The first, the first question, what's the anticipated cost for us? So you had determined six hundred and ten thousand dollars in four years, and almost a million dollars in five years. And that's based on what we would pay over and above that, those, those thresholds. That would be the tax for us, correct? Assuming, however, that this is seven percent inflation, which is an interesting assumption, because, because lots of employers are going to these kinds of plans, rates have actually not risen as quickly as other, as some people had expected, and, you know, so there's a kind of, this is a fast-moving target, I think. Would that be a reasonable conclusion to come to, because, you know, in terms of how much the inflation goes? So anyway, so I just wanted to make sure that we all understood what the Cadillac tax was, that it's forty percent above the threshold that, since we are self-insured, that we would pay. Okay. So what I don't have, however, is, and this is getting the questions out, right? What I don't have is some understanding in terms of what's presented here of, is there a middle ground between these two plans, so that we do not meet our Cadillac tax? You know.
How, how far away is the proposed plan? Is it, does it barely squeak us in under the Cadillac tax? Does it give us a safe margin? I guess an estimate of, you know, obviously, you, you estimated what the premium cost was going to be, and then multiplied by the number of people and by forty percent, so you have an estimate of what the current healthcare plan is going to be. I, I would, I would presume you did it also on the proposed plan?
And I think that you tried to do that with, let me just, with question five, and then the, not, the question nine, by trying to, I, I have to tell you, I just got a little lost in your explanation, because I didn't quite understand where that threshold was for us in terms of a proposed plan and not meeting our, not being penalized with our Cadillac tax. I just didn't quite understand it, if that was your, if that was the attempt to explain it, which I think it probably was.
It was. The, assuming that we have this seven percent trend factor, and we made the assumption of a seven percent medical trend, which has really been less aggressive than what some of the larger carriers in the area have been using. Assuming that the plan has that inflation, we need to be able to peel out sixteen percent. And sixteen percent, if we were going to try to pull that back, brought us to the fifteen hundred, three thousand dollar deductible. Okay, so I think what you're asking, and maybe I, I misunderstood, but is there a plan between two fifty and fifteen hundred, and it's the fifteen hundred that brings us under that threshold? That's what we had determined, that sixteen percent.
So that's what that gets you on with a one percent cushion? It brings you just barely under the Cadillac? Is that what you're saying?
It brings us just barely. The thought is that, along with the transition, if you will, for, because it's a option or a choice going into next year, that we have to also have a pretty good communication strategy to help people become a different type of consumers, that through this education and through the years we had to get there, could we bring people down to engage differently, become healthier, and make better decisions, where we could hold those thresholds within that tax? That make sense?
So do you, just as an example, then, the, so you say that the... I guess I won't make you pull this out of the air now, but I'd like to know soon, for looking at this Cadillac tax, you know, I'm sure there's, it should be a matter of just pulling out of a spreadsheet, where did you see our, each of these plans being for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty? And, you know, then we can, and what does that, what does that mean per, um, yeah, you give a, you talk about district exposure, but also, you know, there'd be a question of how, what does that mean on a per-employee level? And there's a difference to, you know, maybe the, maybe there would be a board decision at that time that we like, we like the plan the way it is, even though, say, it squeaks into the Cadillac plan by two hundred dollars, and we're going to invest the eighty dollars per, I mean, that, that could be a decision that would be made, and I think that should be on the table, rather than use, and I, I'm not, it's not going to go away, but I don't, I don't like the hyperbole of Cadillac tax suggesting unnecessary ridiculous luxury, but, no, that word's not going to go away. It's not my assumption that just because something hit that magic word phrase, according to the, the escalator of four percent, that doesn't mean automatically I wouldn't vote for it. It's not illegal to do it, and a plan could exceed it by just barely.
Could I rephrase what I think?
Sure.
Yes. So to show each of the three plans, projected out to twenty eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, to show the impact of still the trend on them, but also that four percent, how that changes the rate, both from the employer and the employee's perspective?
Well, I guess I'm wondering, what are you anticipating each plan to cost per member in eighteen, nineteen, and twenty? And then it's, I mean, the, the other stuff's just in a table anyways.
You're correct. We have it in a table. We can write that.
So another question that I had was about, um, how much this costs people, employees? Okay, so, the HRA is funded by us for the first year, but actually, it's funded by us as the board determines, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the, from, from the, the memo that I read, the wellness incentives were only twenty-five dollars each?
That's what we recommend starting with.
Right.
And that, and that could change. We could increase the numbers, and we could pay more for people completing them. We could add incentives.
Uh-huh. To a maximum of a hundred dollars, right?
No, we, we, there's no maximum.
No maximum, okay. But there was a list of five or six of them? And that, was that, I'm sorry, was that all-encompassing list, or just an example?
Well, those would be ones that we would recommend for this year to start.
Okay.
Providing incentives for people to do certain wellness activities, activities that are commonly done in health plans.
Sure, totally, understand.
But we can be as creative as we want.
Okay. Well, especially, you know, I would like to see some wellness activities that apply to teachers. We've talked about stress management and that kind of thing, so perhaps that. Okay, so, it's funded, the HRA is funded the first year, or whichever year the board determines. And if we do not fund it after the first year, that means for a single person, they would have to have, they would have to have their, they would have to have fifteen hundred dollars, they would have to spend fifteen hundred dollars in order for insurance to kick in, if we don't fund that past the first year. Is that correct? For an eight, that's what an HRA does.
They'd be going right, they'd be going right into their deductible. They have to have that money in their pocket.
They would have to have that, yes. They would have to fund it themselves.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, the, the thought is, is that when you go into the high deductible plan of an HRA, that the employer would continue to fund it. And in some cases, employers have had good experience, and usually look at the experience you've had with your plan, and if you've had good experience and costs have been kept down, then you can fund it even to a greater extent. And I think the experience of the county is it, is that they've had good experience, and they've continued to fund it, and they've continued to allow it to roll over every year. We're recommending right now, we're for sure recommending that the full amount be rolled over to the second year, but we're also looking at whether or not we would recommend rolling it over a second year right away, but we're not sure how much we would recommend, because it is funded by the district, and the further out you go with recommending and asking to approve something, two years from now, the less certainty you are with what the experience will be. So Michelle and I have talked about this, to say, what would we recommend to the board? For some people to go in, but also for those people who may not want to go in the first year, but the next year, maybe they would, if they saw how well other people were doing with it. So we're thinking about recommending rolling over the district-funded portion a second year, but that hasn't been determined. You, so for example, the county has done that. They have rolled over year after year because of the good experience they've had.
So if I understand this accurately, and I'm not sure you do, and you and I have talked a fair amount about it, if the district contribution this year would be twelve fifty, and I don't use it, that goes next year. It's twelve fifty sitting in there, and then do I also get whatever portion the district is adding into that as well? So if the district puts a thousand in next year, then I have twenty-two fifty sitting in there. And I think that the conversations and folks that, that I've been getting feedback from are concerned about making a decision. They think it sounds pretty good, but the, the concern would be, I'm just not there yet, and I've got a lot on my plate to think about. Would the district consider putting a similar offer on the table to give people more time to give it further consideration, is really the question, that would roll instead of just disappear, because there are some, obviously being self-insured, sometimes they put the money in, and then it disappears, and then you start again. And so what people are hoping for is a, is a bigger cushion to carry forward at least one year, is what the, in a second year, opportunity. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, based on what I've been, that's what has been shared with me, concerns.
And just to, to elaborate on that, any money that someone earns automatically rolls over. That's not necessarily a district decision. If I earned that extra money, that hundred dollars, for instance.
Oh, sure.
That will regard it as.
That's just rolls over.
Which is that structure at any point, that earned money always goes.
Okay. So if we want, for example, if we wanted to roll district dollars over that second year, we could change the mix. We could say, we'll add more incentives that you can participate in, such as a stress management class, or more, more classes that people could take, and then reduce the district's contribution, but they would still be able to get to a certain level. You can do these things. I'm not suggesting we would do it, but if we were uncertain about our ability to fund it, we could, you know, we could bring a recommendation to the board to fund it at a certain level. We could always add more, if we had a good experience in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. Or fourteen, fifteen.
Other questions?
Well, let's... Oh, yeah, because it's in the, right. Sometimes I forget which documents are, have come to just me and what's out there in public. Okay, so let's go to the, how much would it cost an employee if diagnosed with the following, which is number seven? So I had called Jean about this earlier today, because I didn't understand why these numbers were the same for a single tier and a family tier. And I still have some questions, but why don't you, why don't you explain at least what the, the essence of the similarity is, and then we can talk about the differences?
Well, if you look at the breast cancer, or the breast biopsy sample, well, I was looking at the breast cancer sample.
The breast, uh, number seven? The breast biopsy sample?
Biopsy.
Okay. Yeah.
If you have, if you have the single tier as a single individual, and when you have your deductibles, the, if you have, one person has a deductible of, we look at the proposed plan, you would, actually, we're looking at the, if we look at, if we look at the, the plan we have now, you have your deductible of two fifty. A family deductible is, is seven fifty, but once the person, a single, a person in a family, let's say a family of four, reaches the two fifty, they have met their in-network deductible. They don't, if they're in the family, they don't go to seven fifty. Then the family, the three grinning people have the balance of five hundred that they can use between them. Is that?
Yes, that's what we had talked about, which I didn't, I just didn't quite understand why these numbers were the same. And so it's because your utilization goes on whether or not it's a single person using it, you get at the single rate, even if you're in a family plan. But the reason why I didn't care for the way that this was written, is because it says, because it just, it, to me, especially when you get to, well, when we get down to where it starts to cost them real money, like breast cancer, although that one person utilizing the healthcare plan within a family as one single member, they, they would have an out-of-pocket of three thousand dollars. There's still an extra three thousand dollars in terms of maximum out-of-pocket for their family. They haven't reached the maximum out-of-pocket for the entire family, although they may, they will have reached it for themselves. That's why I just didn't like the way that was laid out. It just didn't seem quite clear to me.
When you're in the family tier, I think it's exactly the same.
Right.
Because we're talking about one person in the single tier.
One person, right.
You might be carrying family, but the cost to you is still the same for that particular procedure.
Yes, but the max amount of pocket isn't three thousand dollars for the whole family. I mean, it's six thousand dollars under this new proposed plan. That's what I just, I mean, I understand it now, but I just didn't, I, that was curious to me. Right, and then the average annual spend for a family of four and a single person? And then, that's number eight? Given the vast differences between each family of four, a family of four cannot be modeled out with an average. I, I didn't understand that.
Well, interestingly enough, the average family size for the district is actually three point three. Like, the way that the data is captured through a rise, there, there's not a way to get an average. And then, the reason for that is, is when you look at this table, what I was trying to demonstrate on this table is how the spend works. So when you look at how the folks are spending, really forty percent of your plan participants, the top one-third there, forty percent of the plan participants had claims less than the five hundred dollars. So there's not really an average spend within the family. It depends really on the makeup and the different utilization. So I wasn't sure how to pull an average number, without knowing what the average family would look like for a spend. Your routine preventative type of services that a member would go in for on all plans is covered at a hundred percent, no out-of-pocket costs. So it's really, when we look at it, the folks that are sick are your folks who are going to really max out at any one of the plans, likely, from an individual's standpoint, and then depending what their family conditions are, could hit somewhere else in there. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question correctly, but there's no way to just pull an average without knowing what the average, what you would like that average family to look like?
I'd like to piggyback off, off that a little bit. So I've been asking for a, a really long time for an average out-of-pocket for a single and a family, given various plan designs. Is that, is that elsewhere in this document, or is this, is this an attempt to answer what you thought my question was?
This is an attempt to answer, showing you what the spend is amongst your entire group.
Was it, was it unclear for the last two years that my question was, what is the... Was it, was it unclear for the last two years that my question was, what is the out of pocket per family? The number of people at an out of pocket of over $500,000 is precisely zero because that's over our out of pocket maximum. No one paid over $500,000 a year out of pocket. And if you're wondering why I'm upset, it's because this question's been going on for a really long time. And if this is an attempt to answer my question, then someone doesn't know how to, what out of pocket means. What, what do I have to do to get that question answered?
We've-
And I'm asking our, I'm asking our well-paid consultant firm the answer to that question. Do you have actuaries on staff?
The problem is there's not an average number.
Let's not even talk about family yet. I'll get to that in a minute. What about just singles?
Again, I'm, I'm not trying to divert the question or not answer it. It's difficult to give you an average. If we look at your plan design, the average out of pocket spend would not exceed what their maximum out of pocket is.
Did you just tell me the act, the average wouldn't expend, wouldn't exceed the maximum possible? Because my, because my son knows that and not just my older one. Now, come on. That's insulting to me.
Again, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I truly-
Do you have actuaries on staff?
We do not have actuaries.
Who do you go to to get answers to questions like this?
We have risk management people and there are actuaries within the ARISE and we did go to ARISE who said that we, they couldn't give us this average single. So perhaps I'm asking the question wrong, but I'm, I'm certainly will-
Well, if I'm being, okay, if I'm being too, too hard on you because ARISE is not capable of providing the information, then I, I apologize to that extent. But I think there's some, we, we need to engage with a, with a firm that were retaining this. If, if ARISE won't, then someone needs to do it because how can you possibly expect any board member to make a qualified vote on this if we don't know what the difference means to an average family? Do, in these plans, did we calculate the, did we calculate the ACA required actuarial value number on these three plans?
We did.
We did? Could you tell me what they are?
Of the minimum essential plans, yes. We did provide to show you the actual, what the rates would be. And the tool we use from an actuarial standpoint for that is Milliman.
I'm sorry, is-
Milliman.
Okay. So the number, right, you have to be 60 for a 60 or 60 or 70, so what is, what is it? On the, just we'll start the minimum essential.
So on the minimum essential plan, the single premium would be 38576.
Yeah, so I read that. So are you, are you familiar with, and I'm, did I, so, so the ACA specifies whether plans are a bronze, bronze, silver, gold, platinum?
Gold.
Okay. Is, our minimum essential, what is it? Is that a bronze?
That's a great question. We valued the minimum essential plan based on being, being more valuable from the standpoint of having at least minimally 60% coverage-
Yeah.
-which is the bronze. And then affordable, meaning that it was within nine and a half percent of a person's annual earnings. So we, we base that plan and the makeup of that plan is actually an affordable plan that is documented by the Affordable Act as being, meeting that criteria.
Okay, so is it, is it 60%? Is it 62%? So we have a little wiggle room?
That plan is actually, it would be at the maximum levels. It's 100% coverage once we hit the 6,350 out of pocket maximum. So it would be at a bronze level of hitting the maximum.
But the problem though, with the 9.5%, if I may jump in, is its affordability to the individual. And then that, as I had asked, if, if it's more than 9.5% of a person's gross income, then that person would qualify for a cost sharing subsidy, which I did, you know, in doing my research, I wasn't quite sure how that all fits into what we provide, you know, for a full-time employee. I don't, I don't want to divert the conversation from what Andrew's saying because I want to get to that, that part. That's like the last question on this, I want to get to that later. But just to put that in the parking lot, that, you know, the 9.5% of gross salary, there's a lot of employees we have who are full-time for whom that would way exceed 9.5%. So, but we'll talk about that later. I don't want to interrupt, sorry.
Okay. So, so there's, there's two ways that my question could be answered and both have their pros and cons and I live with one of them, okay? One of them would be based on some kind of statistical population and an actuarial model. Is there not, is there not some kind of a, some kind of a calculator of inputting plan designs and getting an out of pocket impact? Because there is, there is a publicly available calculator that will calculate for you your coverage percentage, your actuarial value. You can punch in your stuff and, okay, that's 60% you meet minimum or whoops, that's 56% your plan would be non, non qualifying. So, so do we know, does, does this minimal essential, and I get that there's two standards, all right, and it's been determined to meet the 9.5% requirement of, of income, okay? And that, that's a lot easier to, to calculate. So does it just reach 60? Is it 62? Is it 65?
We do have that information. I can provide that to you.
Okay. So if that, if that plan wouldn't, if we have to offer 60, 60% of, if a plan has to pay 60% of, of costs, then that would mean it doesn't pay 40% of costs. So to even know that it's going to be 60% of costs, we must know what the total costs are too. Either, either the total costs within our membership or, or our total costs in a standard population, right? Because otherwise you wouldn't know 60% of what. Did we, do we happen to know what that number is on our current plan?
I don't know it in, sitting in front of you, but we have the information and we can calculate out exactly where the plan falls within and we have done those models.
Okay, so then, so then it's not too far apart to take the, if you know that the plan cost, which you've calculated, is 60% of something per member, you should be able to subtract the two. Because what I'm not going to do, again, because I already did that once, but the things were a little crazy around the entire state, is right before I was on the board and transitioning into my first board meeting, I had to decide on this rapid package of changes. And one of them was, do, were prescription drugs going to go into the overall out of pocket maximum or not? And I was told, I was told we don't know by administrators, okay, it's a technical function. We had consultants for that, okay? We were told, no, we were told, I don't know by actuaries. We were told, I don't know by, I was told, I don't know by people high up in, in organizations that we contract with for multiple millions of dollars per year. So I just stayed up all night and pulled some standard population census data and did it myself. I don't do that, and I'm not doing that for free anymore. I've been there and done that, okay? And the answer, the answer of what that impact was going to be to an average family and an average single was, actually turned out, turned out that the compromise that was approved was pretty good for the employee. So my problem, and as you can tell, it's getting to be a serious problem for me because this has been going on for a really long time. Actuarial models have to exist because the ACA mandates that you calculate how much of a person's cost this is going to pay. Whether or not the, how the ACA does that for, for families, I'm not going to say that I know, but I know how they do it for singles, more or less. Whether that's multiplied by an average family size or not, that part I don't know. But still, whether you code it as single or family, it still has to meet ACA standards, right?
I think I can get you the answer you're looking for and I think with this information, what we'll do is tell you what the average is based off of the whole population. And this will give you a further breakdown then to see how they might differentiate, knowing that you have some anomalies, some on the higher end. As an example, six participants that were 250,000 over each. So we could pull those anomalies out to come up with an average. Is that kind of what you-
Well, you, you would barely even have to because what's our out of pocket maximum now?
Right now, your out of pocket maximum is a thousand for a single and 2,000 for a family.
Okay. And prescription drugs or copays are in that?
They are.
And are other Alcopays in it?
Correct.
Okay. So I know, I know with absolute certainty that no one on this chart had an out of pocket of more than 4,000. I, I guess unless they were, I'll take the leap of faith that if they chose something uncovered, it was really out of the ballpark of medical necessity because I'm hoping we're erring really much on the side of caution with any visit, questioning visits and that kind of thing. So nobody on this chart had more than 4,000, all right? Some of these plan participants participated as a family and some participated as a single, right? So no one paid over 4,000. We know that none of the, we know that 1,300, well, even if, I guess if we paid, if we paid nothing, it's almost certain that their spending was pretty close to nothing, right? We would, or, we would maybe pay nothing. I guess if a prescription was a retail cost of less than five for a generic, that person might have spent three out of pocket for a generic and we paid nothing. So even then, but that's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty trivial case if someone has even a whole bunch of prescriptions that never rose to the level of us paying anything. Although, you know, even then, someone has to keep track of this because by person and by family, right? Because we have a combined cap and whether it's ARISE for this or Caremark for that, someone has to know when to stop it, when people hit an out of pocket maximum. That's on us, not on a, not as much on the consulting firm, but who, I'll ask Jean, who, who does it? Who, who knows, who has the information to know when to flip the switch that the Becker family with this last prescription reached its cap or that the Becker family with that last ER copay hit the cap?
That would be ARISE.
ARISE.
That's what you paid your plan administrator to do.
So they, so-
If, if, what, what we assist with is if, if an employee, you know, we get calls with questions about, how do I understand what the estimate of benefits would be? How do I understand my bill? Why did, you know, why are they denying me? And so Sharon spends a great deal of time working through with people how to understand it, but ARISE is the one that sends the bills and she can pull them up and, and see them to help people understand them.
Sure. And by, and by the way, I've never, I've never heard anything but positives about our benefits department service to customers and helping people understand. So, well, there's some things about this, I'm very upset about that. Your, your department's service of customers is not even remotely one of them because that's, that's the kind of thing I would hear about if it was a problem. If people are getting surprise EOBs and stuff, we all hear about that pretty, pretty quick if there were horror stories, so.
But you do, that's why you monitor them and watch them.
Right.
I mean, I found errors on EOBs.
So you'll have to, you'll have to excuse my skepticism-
Explanation.
-that after asking these, after asking the same question, the same way, since a month before I was even on the board because I was trying to prepare for the first decision I had to make as a board member, which is pretty huge, and I never got it. And it almost seems like question eight was an attempt to answer my question that I've been asking for, for two years. And by the way, you didn't use models, which I tried to put into my question to make it easier. If it was easier to run something off a standard population, I was okay with that. So you didn't use models, okay. You used our plan and then you put something other than what is the average out of pocket? You put the average district spend. And so I don't really, you'll have to excuse my lack of confidence that my question will be answered in two weeks, but we're not voting tonight, so there's nothing for me to vote no on.
Just a point of clarification. Are we clear on the question?
We, I am clear on the question, but what I'm not clear on is can ARISE, you know, provide the necessary information? Because Andrew's asked this question before this. I'm not sure that ARISE can give us the information for me. That's, that's what I remember.
Oh, perhaps, perhaps that would be a time to look into someone capable of doing so.
Well, we are moving to UMR. I mean, he did vote on that. I want to throw a vote.
So do we have someone, is there someone from UMR involved in a transition?
Yeah, we've met with them.
Because I would, I would assume perhaps an outgoing contractor, I wouldn't put it past an outgoing contractor to maybe put the needs of current clients a little higher. So maybe the problem was ARISE and to whatever extent the problem was ARISE, I apologize to M3, but ultimately, we're paying good money for this ACA compliance stuff, which requires a knowledge of what people are spending versus what the plan would cost in some kind of a computer somewhere. So I won't be repetitive here, that was, that was my question and I've made it clear for the last time and I guess we'll see what we have in, in two weeks or, or prior in an update. Katie?
I'm more concerned with individual families and how they're going to be able to translate moving from the traditional, the current plan to one of the new plans. And is there going to be some kind of a, a program that people can use to, if I, you know, just having done my flex stuff, I can plug all my medical expenses in- I can plug all my medical expenses in for this, which, you know, was an average year given, you know, you don't, you don't know what's gonna happen the following year, but just to kind of give an idea of how my year would have looked with one of the other two plans.
One of the things that we're doing with the transition to UMRs will have online enrollments. And that is one of the features in their plan is they'll do a side-by-side comparison so you can put in what, what you've experienced or what you expect to experience as well, and it will model out for you and, and help you with that decision. Obviously, the decision is the employees', but it will help guide.
Okay, and then will there also be with the flex piece and with the HRA piece, guidance with what, I mean, it looks like if your maximum, single maximum is gonna be 3,000, you'd wanna put at least 1750 in flex to, to make up the difference between what you get from the, the HRA.
Only if you, only if you were gonna, only if you max out.
If you max out, right. I mean, but, you know, some, I mean, some people plan root canals based on
Sure.
flex and things like that, things that you can anticipate, and there are also things that you can't, you don't anticipate. So, there, I'm glad to hear that there would be something that would help people.
We want to see if you, if the model includes the flex component. I'm not sure if.
Because now flex has changed too. That max is what, 2,500, but now you can, as of this year, you can carry over 500?
Well, there's, you can either do the carryover or you have a grace period. And, and what we have at this point is the three-month, the grace period, so people have a little longer to spend it before they lose that money.
Okay.
Which, in looking at, we, we went through and M3 actually helped us look at where are people with their, their current status and what will be most beneficial. And the most beneficial for us at this point is to allow that carryover versus the $500 amount, or to allow the, the grace period for some.
Allow the grace period rather than the, the $500 amount?
At least for this, this first year, we, we'd wanna do some education upfront if we were to ever change that so that people could plan accordingly. Because right now, people could, could plan, could save that money and actually use it in the new plan year, use two years' worth at the same time because of that overlap in, in, in the time period.
So, you can build up and plan for the root canal and new glasses or whatever.
Exactly.
Braces, things like that.
We expect that we have some people that, that do that, so we purposely have not made that transition this year.
How's that not close? I mean, the flex plans are basically the employee's own money. So, how does it make a difference to the district if we do rollover or continuation?
It's, well, it's the employee's money at, at this point, and so those people who were anticipating to still have that money to use it in 2,000, at the start of this new plan year, say July, they were waiting, they had the money set aside, but they know they're gonna have double. So, we'd be taking it away from them at this point if, if we did that after they made their plan elections already.
The maximum rollover is only $500. So, there were people who maybe elected the full 2,500, knowing they were gonna bump it up to the second plan year and have like $5,000 to spend.
But wait, let, let me just stop you for one second. So, flex money is my own money that I put into an account tax-free. And so, when you say lose it, it doesn't go into the ether, right? Doesn't it, don't, don't you just pay taxes on it?
It goes to the district.
You lose it. Use it or, use it or lose it, yes.
It goes back to the district.
It goes back to the district.
And, and that's, that's not a district decision, that's, that's a federal.
No, that's a federal decision.
Yeah, so that you can't, that's my understanding.
Right, that's a federal decision, so.
So, but the thing is, with the, the example you used about a root canal, that's not a, I was getting a little confused. That's not a medical service, it's a dental service. And so, there's all kinds of maxims for the dental plan.
But you can use flex money for.
Yes, but not that, but the HRA doesn't apply to dental. That's what I was getting this moment.
Okay.
Flex can apply to dental, and there's maxims there, but HRA does not apply to dental.
DHR would not be right.
Original question was the education component. And we're, we are creating individual education components as well as a combined one. So, for an individual who might, might want some additional knowledge on just flex spending, there's a tutorial on just flex spending, and we created them, we call them brain sharks, they're like little mini webinars, if you will. Maybe 12, 12 to 15 minutes in length. So, a person could go in and look at one specific component versus the overall whole plan that we're rolling out. Because our intent was if we roll this out, we would do a series of meetings. We would also have the meetings, webinar capabilities so someone could go back and watch it. Or I could take it home and have my spouse watch it with me, or maybe I just wanna understand the HRA better, I just wanna understand the flex better. We would also break it down into components.
But the, correct me if I'm wrong, proposed plan, you know, we have this current plan, we have the proposed plan, which is the high deductible and then the minimum, minimal, minimum, huh, sorry, minimum essential coverage. Eventually, there will be no current plan, correct?
That would be what we would, we think is going to happen.
That's right.
That, that plan would become unaffordable.
Right, so what we are really talking about tonight, I mean, there's the current reality, which is we have three. But in the future, which is not too distant, we will have merely two, right?
Well, you could also have three, but maybe it's not 250, maybe it's a different level, it's not as low as 250. Maybe it's a third plan option that's not as high as the 1,500, but higher than the 250.
Didn't we just say that the 1,500 was calculated to be just barely under the Cadillac?
Correct, but.
So, are you going back to my idea that if maybe we would choose to offer one that's 1,000 and pay a little Cadillac tax? Is that where you're going with it?
Yeah, I, I'm saying you could do that. I, I don't think we're eliminating that, but we're just trying to introduce this choice and education along the way. So, for those folks who look at it and say, there is no way this 1,500 plan would work for me, you can stay in that 250 plan.
For now.
For now.
Yeah, I mean, let's, right, I just, four now, right? So, I'm also, let me ask a question, essentially two more questions, one hopefully short, one a little longer because I'm not clear about some things. So, the, what other districts are doing, which I think Mike had asked. So, that would be number nine. And okay. So, just looking at some of the other school districts and in size, like comparable ones are Appleton, Fond du Lac, Oshkosh,
Madison.
Kenosha, Racine.
Madison, Kenosha, okay. So, it says, so, okay, let's look at Madison. Okay, so three plans, all the same traditional health maintenance organization, no deductible copays only. That's what they're doing right now.
It sounds like they still have a couple.
That's right.
Well, and they get 41 million more per year.
Right, because of the.
I mean, I, I say it all the time, but it's, it's really, it's true.
Right, so let's go to a better, a better example, which would be what, Mike?
Sheboygan.
Kenosha, Beloit.
Okay, Kenosha, okay. So, offers two plans, standard is 500, 1,000, buy-up is 250, 500, translation? I don't know what that means.
Collective bargaining.
Okay, moving along.
But I can explain what that means.
Yes, what does that mean?
That means that they base their premium contribution off of the 500, 1,000, 500 single, 1,000 family.
Okay.
And they allow members to buy up and pay the difference in the premium to get to that 250 single 500 family.
Okay, that's like, right.
They hold their premium solid on one plan and allow the employee to buy up or, or take that same designated dollar.
Okay, thank you. So, Melissa, choose a school district then?
Should I choose a school?
Yes.
You know who has, no, you has, you know who still has.
Who's about the size of those.
Madison and Kenosha is it?
How do you feel about Beloit?
How do I feel about Beloit?
They don't. They don't, okay.
Beloit.
Beloit does not have it, no.
Okay, so.
Beloit, right below Madison.
Selsey just picked it, still leaves one on the list.
There you go, dumb lock bad, okay.
When they give more money.
So, Beloit, two plans, high deductible with HRA 2,000, 4,000, HD, HP with HSA 2, 2,500, 5,000. So, is the 2,000, 4,000, the deductible, the, what is that? Deductible and maximum out-of-pocket for a single person? What is that?
So, the 2,000 is a single, the 4,000 is family.
Okay.
They have a high deductible health plan, that's the deductibles, and then they have a health reimbursement account on top of that.
Okay.
They also have a high deductible health plan, that's a $2,500 single, $5,000 family. And that plan is a qualified health savings account plan.
Okay, and so what is the maximum out-of-pocket for those?
Because that's the question.
That is the question.
That's really the question, I hear, over and over. It's not even what the deductibles are. What's it gonna really cost?
What is the, when I look at this, right, and I see these numbers.
That's the question.
And like, you know, back to the chart, and I'm glad you explained to me about the single tier and the family tier, and I totally get that. But when I'm looking at that, if I had to spend money on a biopsy, I'm looking at, well, the rest of my family, and out of our, our nut, it's $6,000, not 3,000, even though for me, the maximum would be 3,000 under this new plan. So, I wanna know where, okay, so we, so we're bumping up against 2,000 and 4,000, which is more than what we have, but I don't know what the maximum out-of-pocket is.
Would it be helpful to show you some of those plans kind of outlined in this type of form?
That would be very nice.
Yes.
Could you tell us also what the district contributions would be and are they rolling those? What does it look like?
Sure.
But I would say you don't have to do it with all.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Not a little.
I would say, I would do Beloit.
Just pick ones so she knows which ones we wanna see.
Beloit, Appleton.
Beloit, Appleton.
They're pretty comparable. Fond du Lac.
Fond du Lac, yep.
Sheboygan, there are sides.
Because this really speaks to competing for teachers.
Right.
That, those positions that we just approved, that's what this speaks to.
So, Beloit, Appleton, Sheboygan and Fond du Lac, we'll lay it out in a spreadsheet that looks similar to your, and show us next to your plans. So, there'll be a few sheets here, but you'll have your plans and then we can put theirs.
Did we check Racine because that's real comparable in size?
Or what about DePere and Howard Swamaco, those are.
Are competitors.
Competitor school districts.
DePere and Howard Swamaco as well.
East DePere, West DePere?
Both.
I know, that appears.
That appears, yes, okay. And then to my final question. Drum roll.
Oh, I know, I know.
It goes to the one in four times poverty and the subsidies, the cost sharing. Okay. This is where I just, I didn't quite find an answer. I wasn't sure. And you, in your answer, you say, if the premium for the employee only tier is more than 9.5% of the employee's gross annual income, the district would be exposed to health, healthcare reform penalties. Okay, so I just, I guess I just don't see how we don't have employees who would bump up against this 9.5% of gross annual income and some of these costs here.
Even on the lowest one?
Yes, and the lowest, not the current plan, but yes.
Even on that minimum essential, it's three-something a month, right?
You know, I mean, because let's remember, four times poverty for a family of three is, is a little less than $80,000.
So, a couple of things. When they look at the shared responsibility, the employer, you're only looked at the single lowest cost option. Employee, however, when they go to the exchange, could qualify for subsidy because the exchange looks at the family income. So, they look at the family income, they may be, whether it's a tax, credit, or plan sign issue. They revert them back to the employer, and the employer has a plan that the member has available to them that is within nine and a half percent of the single and their annual income. So, while they may qualify for subsidy, the employer is not necessarily penalized.
Okay.
They're two separate.
Okay, that, that was where I was not sure. Okay, so the employer's, okay, so let's say we've got, we've got a new teacher, so going back to actually, let's make a straw person, right? We have a new teacher, I'm actually thinking of someone I know, who is.
Why don't we make him a low, a lower wage hourly? I mean, that's the real test, right?
Well, but a new teacher would qualify, I think. So, a new teacher at, who with a bachelor's degree, who's a single dude, young, healthy, is making for his, as a single person, he would be making only two and a half times poverty.
The poverty level relates to getting subsidy.
Yes.
Doesn't relate to the employer and the penalties.
Yes, so couldn't that person, this is what, the question I couldn't find for myself, couldn't that person say, I don't want your health insurance? I'm going out on the exchange because I'm gonna get a better deal?
They could.
And then don't we lose a healthy person that we need?
You could. You could lose that and they could do that. When they go out onto the exchange, when the employer offers a plan, they are going to pay for that with after-tax dollars, and then they lose the employer contribution. So, you have to weigh out all those components, but you are correct, they could.
That was, that was what I was like, yeah.
So, we'd actually look at the, whatever the... So, it would be, it would be pretty hard to come, if, if not impossible to come up with a... Could you look at the, look at the employee, the employee contribution on the minimum essential plan is $65 a month, so pretty close to 800 a year. So, their own income, even if, which you couldn't add 30 hours a week, if someone made even $20,000, the threshold would be $2,000 and we'd be way under that. Right?
Correct. We actually did a, oh, it's a very detailed, we, we did do a thorough analysis of the reform, taking your salaries, your hourly people, to see exactly where they fall in the continuum. So, we, we do have that information to know. What, what these plans do is say someone could go and get subsidy, and that might be better for them, but the district would not be penalized.
But the district would not be penalized, but we would, but does it matter that we've lost a healthy person out of our insurance pool?
That is absolutely a risk.
Yes, yes, okay. Okay. Yeah, my husband and I were talking about that, because just because I work for you doesn't mean I have to take your health insurance.
Right.
Especially now, right?
And we are reacting to the payer-claim penalty that, you know, may or may not look like it's scheduled today, right? That could change, it could be changed. The Cadillac tax has had no further guidance on it since it originally came out in the law. That could change too. And so, we don't know what the what-ifs are, so we're, we're just trying to do the analysis based on what we know. And then as it changes, have the fluidity to be able to update, change our, our tools as it happens.
Okay.
Other questions?
Other than what we had asked for tonight, especially about the different, the different school districts in a spreadsheet like this.
Yeah.
You know, I have one or two other things that I'll email you, Gene, just, just about, questions in my head that I still have, but I think we need to leave this subject at that.
And if there's, if there's other questions that the board has, to send them to Gene, and then we could also offer something in an update and just say, here are some questions that keep coming forward, so everybody has their questions and the answers. That'd be great.
I appreciate that you took the time to answer 27 questions.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, that does conclude.
Okay. We do have a closed session, I'll read that motion. Special Board meeting closed session is scheduled for Monday, April 7th, 2014, immediately following the adjournment of the work session meetings. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation of which it is or is likely to involve potential litigation matters. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any people's employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or... of specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except for paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel matters. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851AF, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except for paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit. For the purpose of considering student admission pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 120.131F2, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically to wit, potential property contracts and transportation contracts. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851B, there's a back page to this, considering dismissal, demotion, licensing, or discipline of any public employee or person licensed by a board or commission or the investigation of charges against such person or considering the grant or denial of tenure for a university faculty member, and the taking of formal action on any such matter, provided that the faculty member or other public employee or person licensed has given actual notice of any evidentiary hearing which may be held prior to final action being taken, and of any meeting at which final action may be taken. The notice shall contain a statement that the person has the right to demand that the evidentiary hearing immediately be held in open session. As paragraph and paragraph F not apply to any such evidentiary hearing or meeting where the employee or person licensed requests that an open session be held. And Wisconsin Statute 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit, to consider the preliminary notice of consideration of non-renewal for staff and take action consistent with Wisconsin Statute 18.22. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law. I'm sorry, could you repeat that? So moved.
Second.
I missed one part.
Do I need to repeat one part, Sadie?
Becker?
Pevi.
Jeffries, Maloney, Franz, Warren.
Hi. Becky. Karen Zero, go across the hall.